I'd like to call the meeting to order and begin tonight with the roll call, if you will. Michelle?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Reed?
Here.
Councilmember Kohler?
Here.
Councilmember Hellman?
Here.
Vice Mayor Ackerman?
Here.
And Mayor Goddard?
I am here. Okay, thank you so much, Michelle. And before we actually dive into the meeting tonight, I thought I would start with a a kind of a, an unorthodox kind of ritual here. Since this is my last meeting as mayor and we will be changing around the council tonight, I was remembering back when Mayor Kohler was having her last meeting last year. And I brought a proclamation forward and that proclamation was to declare December of 2019 gratitude month in the town of Fairfax. I don't really believe that any of us really knew what was coming around the corner. We have had quite a year. And so I thought I would revisit that. As this is my last meeting, getting to choose to do some crazy things like this, I thought I would go ahead and step out a bit. And I was wondering if I could ask each council member to take anywhere from 10 seconds to a minute to just name a couple of things that you feel grateful for right now. And then I would like to finish with expressing my gratitude. So no pressure, but if you would like to spend any amount of time up to a minute with any of those expressions to share with each other and the public, I would invite that right now. Just go for it.
Well, I'll go for it. I'm grateful that my friend in Kansas, who's a nurse, who was near death with COVID, is recovering and is now home. So that to me is the best part of this week and that's foremost on my mind. And there's so much more. You know, during this time of COVID-19, there's been so many terrible things, but there's also been so many wonderful things about getting to walk more, walking in the neighborhoods, getting to know even more of my neighbors than I knew before. Just taking things more quietly than I did in the past, always running. So thank you very much, Mayor. Nice tribute on your last night.
Yeah, I guess I could say that I'm very thankful that the silver lining for the COVID thing has kind of showed us how humans can really change their behavior. Nobody hasn't noticed that, you know, the air is a lot clearer now. You know, there's less people fuming away in traffic. It's there, it's difficult times, there's no question about that. But I'm grateful that and hopeful that that people can really see the human side of each other that shines through here. I mean, people have reached out and helped each other. And really, that's good. So, you know, we live in a community and we're interdependent on each other. And, and if we see each other as humans, that's great. And, you know, I see this lovely background behind you, Renee, and it reminds me, you know, get out in nature. It is, I am thankful to be able to do that. We live in a special place and I'm grateful for it.
Thanks, John.
I'll go next. And I really appreciate the words that John and Barbara have shared. And thank you, Renee, this is a lovely exercise. Similarly, I too am grateful for the simplicity and the slowing down of life that I guess you could call is the silver lining that this pandemic has offered and required to a large degree. We, my husband, for example, used to have a two-hour commute and was not able to join us at the dinner table for most nights. And so we get to be together now and he's in a lot better physical and mental health and I'm very, very grateful for that. And yeah, I just find myself appreciating, I think, the simplicity and the slower pace and just being able to notice things that you can't notice when you're moving in the fast lane. And we live in a wonderful community surrounded by natural beauty. And I'm deeply grateful for that and for my health and my family and my friends that are, that means so much to me. So thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'm, I'm also grateful for our family being together in a quiet space and for the fact that we've been able to do that, even though we're doing things on the outside and, and have responsibilities, we're able to see each other as we do it. Actually gotten to know more of what Diane does in the day. And the way people come together and, as John said, adapt to changing circumstances and with joy and with appreciation. I particularly think of our daughter's farm and how that has come together really as just an amazing little community of people who are all sheltering and working and living up there and able to really do an amazing thing together to, to serve hundreds of other people as, as they're doing so and keep it all healthy and clean and just do a wonderful, wonderful job. So, so many of those things replicated all throughout the world as people adapt and shift and find their way through this. Yeah, I'm very grateful.
Thank you, Bruce. I'm just going to take a moment and I wanted to spend a just brief moment appreciating each of you. So I'm going to start with John, just sort of a flow of words. Your generosity of time and spirit, your willingness to collaborate and share your knowledge, your honesty, your always willing to be available to help and your great friendship. Bruce, your thoughtfulness in decision-making and your gentle tone, your willingness to learn and dive into new experiences, your unwavering prioritization of climate protection and environmental stewardship. Stephanie, your enthusiasm and can-do approach, your follow-through and commitment to the work you undertake, your excellent partnering and the way you made the most challenging early days of COVID a positive team effort. I had an excellent experience and I am grateful. And Barbara, your inexhaustible work ethic, your organization and follow-through, your thoughtful personal touch, your thank you cards, your birthday gifts, your check-ins, you taught me that we can disagree, we can argue and we can stand opposed, that each day is a new start and when you lose a vote, you move on. So I want to thank each of you and I send a tremendous amount of gratitude to our staff for a year that has taken us all by surprise and for the way everyone has dug in and really kept this town afloat and we are thriving. So that is great thanks to staff. And so moving on, thank you all for, for hearing one another and thank you to the public for hearing our expressions. We are going to move on now, back to the business, and that is to the approval of the agenda and the affidavit of posting. I do have some reordering that I would like to run by you all, but does anyone have anything they'd like to, to change on the agenda? Seeing none. First of all, I would like to request that we pull item 15 and that is so that we can await more information. Still doing research about how to use the lot in the very best possible way and how to provide for enough parking and consider all the interests downtown. I would also like to ask that we reorder the agenda and move open time until after item seven. That's so that it can be heard by the newly seated council and that we can move through the more ceremonial parts of the meeting. And then the last is that I would like to move the town manager's report, which is at the very end of the agenda, to after number seven. And this is in order for the police chief to make a report.
Before open time?
Before open time. Yes, and then? Uh, yes, indeed. Does that work for everyone?
Yeah.
Okay, excellent. So I'd like to entertain a motion to that effect.
I'll move to approve the agenda and affidavit of posting with the changes that you just described to the agenda, which is that after item seven would be the town manager's report and open time and item 15 would be continued.
Okay. Okay, excellent. So we have a motion Ackerman and a second Reed. All those in favor? I'll start with Councilmember Hellman.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Kohler?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ackerman? Okay, and myself, I vote aye. So we are moving right along. I'm going to read the land acknowledgement. And it states that the Fairfax Town Council acknowledges that we are located on the unceded ancestral lands of the Coast Mewock people of present-day Marin County. We honor with gratitude the land itself and all of its ancestors, past, present, and emerging. The town council will review our agenda at 10:00 PM and will ascertain which items, if any, will be continued to another meeting. And any meeting, I'm sorry, any matter not started by 11:30 will be continued to an adjourned or regular council meeting unless the council votes to suspend this rule. And? Meeting protocol. Okay, sorry, I skipped the very first part, so I'm just going to go back to that. So the meeting protocol states that the mayor shall maintain order at the meetings. The council and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and/or ridiculing the character or motives of council members, staff, or members of the public and to maintain the standards of tolerance and civility. And we are moving right along to the announcements this evening. The town hall offices will be closed on, starting December 24th through January 3rd and reopening on, on January 4th. Michelle wrote 202, put a 1 on there. Yes, January 4th, 2021. The Fairfax Craft Fair has gone virtual for 2020 and we'll have new and returning local vendors shop now and support our local artists. We hope to be back in 2021 in the pavilion. Our virtual holiday wreath making is coming up on December 13th at 2:00 PM. You can go to the town of Fairfax website to understand what a holiday virtual wreath making event might look like, but I hear it's going to be great. We have vacancies on boards and commissions and applications as always and information are available on the town website or by contacting the clerk. The Climate Action Committee has up to three vacancies. Parks and Rec has one vacancy. Open Space Committee has one vacancy. Measure F Oversight Committee has two vacancies. And finally, the Fairfax Food Pantry continues to serve the community every Saturday at the Fairfax Community Church between 8:30 and 10:30. Please visit the food pantry should you have any need for food. And if you know people who are in need, please send them up to the food pantry. And in the spirit of gratitude, always thanks to Larry and Holly Bragman for running that food pantry religiously every single Saturday. Stephanie, I think you had some announcements you wanted to add.
Yes, and I will be quick because I know we've really haven't, we have a big agenda. So I wanted to acknowledge and thank an organization called Dine11 Marin, which has formally closed. They, this is a nonprofit that mobilized about seven months ago in response to the pandemic. And some of you might be familiar with them. What the, what the model was, they took donations from the community and then they purchased meals from local restaurants across Marin County. And then they would serve meals to first responders. And then as the organization grew, they began to enlist volunteers and they provided, they engaged 32 Marin restaurants. They began preparing up to 650 meals weekly, in total over 21,000 meals. And they ultimately started providing for seven food pantries, including 1,500 canal restaurant gift certificates and groceries mixed in. And it was seven local women who led this organization, most of them in San Anselmo actually. And a handful of restaurants were Fairfax restaurants that benefited from this, including Hummingbird Cafe, Iron Springs, The Lodge, Mas Masah, Harry's Deli, and The Way Station. So I just wanted to thank Dine11 Marin. It was a really wonderful opportunity for us to be a part of and help us get us through this pandemic in the early days, or actually for seven solid months. So we thank you for your service to the community, both from a small business standpoint and from a vulnerable population standpoint. Thank you so very, very much, ladies. So that was one of my announcements. And then my other announcement was to recognize Mr. Noah Mohan. I think everyone, or probably most everyone, is aware of the rather disgusting event that took place about a week ago with the swastika stickers that, that read, "We are everywhere." And I just want to quickly, briefly read the written statement that I gave to the IJ, which I had anticipated would be truncated because it was rather long in the article, but I, I think he did a wonderful job of standing up to hate. And, you know, Noah, it's not an easy thing to do, but I think he represented our community extremely well and I applaud him. So I'm going to quickly read this. This disgusting event is one in a string of terror Marin has seen recently. And I applaud Noah for confronting hate face-to-face, as he did, and expressing the values of the Fairfax community, which actively stands against antisemitism, racism, and bigotry of any form. This young man's attempt to instill fear in our community failed and will continue to fail because our community believes in humanity and the truth. And the truth is, the swastika is a symbol of fear and hate against Jews. And we need to do a better job of educating and awareness of this horrific episode in world history. This starts at home as well as in the schools at an early age. We cannot wait until kids reach high school age, when vulnerable adolescents are being targeted online. An FBI study recently found that 22% of millennials have not heard of or are not sure of if they have heard of the Holocaust. I sincerely hope that District Attorney Frigoli investigates this matter along with the Redwood High School, Tam Union High School District antisemitic social media threats toward Jewish students as hate crimes. If they are conducted by a minor, there are restorative justice programs and redemptive opportunities. So thank you again, Noah. We are very proud to have you as a member of our community. That's all.
Thank you, Stephanie. And just for, for information, the chief is here to deliver a brief report and I will be making a statement, which I will be then asking for all of your support to make on behalf of the Fairfax Town Council. So thank you, Stephanie, for calling it up. And so with that, we're going to move forward. We're at the consent calendar, which is on this agenda, items one, two, and three, followed by a second consent agenda after the new council is seated, and those are items nine through 12. So moving right along, the consent calendar is the opportunity for public, the, the opportunity for public comment on the consent calendar items will occur prior to the town council's vote on the consent calendar. And the council may approve the entire consent calendar with one action or vote. Or in the alternative, items on the consent calendar may be removed, town council member, staff member, for a separate discussion and vote. So is there anyone who has anything on consent they'd like to, to talk about? Bruce? You're muted, Bruce.
Sorry. This is with regard to item one, it's just, which is the council members' assignments. I wanted to make an announcement regarding one of those assignments, which was that Mayor Goddard and myself have been the, serving on the working group with two members of each of the town councils of San Anselmo, Larksburg, and Ross, and also two supervisors from the county of Marin, that to delve into the question of possible renaming of Sir Francis Drake Boulevard. And that has, we've had several meetings, including listening session and a learning session, which have been, have all been broadcast and are available. They were quite informative. And that committee has now reached a point where it's, that, that committee has voted to go back to our respective councils. So we'll come back to our Fairfax council. And on December 16th, I believe, we'll bring this up for discussion to consider whether to move forward with this renaming. The jurisdictions are asked to complete our community process, our discussion by March 31st, if not sooner. And just to be clear, if we do decide to go forward with the decision to rename the Boulevard and the, the working group is hoping that every, all the jurisdictions will stay in unison on, on this, but that's not necessarily the case. We can decide as a town what, what to do. If we do decide to go forward with a renaming, then this would, that would be the decision at this point, but then a decision as to what the future name might be would be a separate decision with a separate process. So that's just by way of announcement for the public because, so that we'll know that on December 16th, which will be our mid-month meeting, we'll have a chance to talk about this.
And if I may add for clarification, that there is no prescribed process for this. Each and every jurisdiction will begin a discussion with the community at, at a council meeting to determine what our path forward is. Is it a community workshop? Is it more learning? Is it, so there is nothing that's pre-decided and it was decided by the working group that this absolutely should emerge from the community, not just a decision, but the entire process for considering this, this renaming possibility. Stephanie?
Thank you for sharing and for the, for the clarification. I just have one quick question. So then, then the potential renaming is not, may not happen, of course, in whole. You're saying that if Fairfax were to make any decision or recommendation, it would only be on our piece of?
That's, that's correct.
Sir Francis Drake, if you will?
That's correct. Each of the jurisdictions and the county itself with regard to the part of Sir Francis Drake, and it's not in the towns, has, each jurisdiction has control over our part of what's currently Sir Francis Drake Boulevard and we can make an independent decision about what to do. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. So what about anything else on consent on those first three items?
Well, I am personally fine with number three, but I think there's members of the public that want to talk about number three, so I think we should probably pull it.
Why don't we hear from the public? And if there is a member of the public or anyone who would like to do that, I absolutely take your recommendation. Or would you like us to pull it prior to hearing from the public?
Well, aren't you, aren't you, I'm sorry, am I, am I missing that? Aren't we, aren't you asking if we are approving the consent right now?
No, because we go to the public first, before we approve anything.
Oh, sorry, I missed that, sorry.
That's okay. So let's, is that good? We'll wait for the public to comment and then we'll come back and decide whether that item should be pulled.
Yeah.
So with that, let's go ahead and take any public comment that might be out there at this point. Michelle?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I am just waiting for the hands to come in and some are raised. Right now, we have two hands. The first two hands are from Shelby Lamott and Walt Vernon. I'll start with Shelby.
Okay. And so just for clarification, everyone, if you weren't here in the beginning of the meeting, we have moved open time to after item number seven and we are now on the consent calendar, items one, two, and three. So that's all we're addressing right now. Open time for public comment will happen after item number seven. So?
Okay, I have unmuted Shelby and?
Okay.
I would just like to take this opportunity in open expression to put on the public record how much we appreciate the work that Renee Goddard has done as mayor for our town. This has been, I mean, it's been said a million times, an unprecedented year, the hardest year ever. And I would just like to recognize out loud that Renee has done a fantastic job guiding us through this year, guiding us through the hard times of COVID and caring for our seniors and caring for our youth and caring for our climate and making sure that the businesses are able to stay alive. And I know that was a, a team effort, but I just want to say out loud in public that the appreciation that we feel for the work that Renee has done in this year as mayor of a town that is thriving in a, in a time when many aren't, I just want to say thank you, Renee, and thank all of you because you've all been there and it's been a tough election year and a tough pandemic year and, and you're doing a great job. But Renee, as our leader, I'm proud to call you my mayor and I'm proud to call you my friend. Thank you.
Here, here.
Shelby, thank you very much. And as much as that was really lovely to hear, I really need to redirect us back to that we are on the consent calendar. I know this is confusing. If you tuned in late, we're waiting on open time in order to have the new council, the newly seated council here, the public open time, open expression. So if you have something on items one, two, or three on the consent calendar, please go ahead and raise your hands now. You will have a chance to talk about anything you want, not on the agenda, a little, little later on. Anyone else on one, two, three? John?
I received a text from a constituent that doesn't have access to the agenda and so numbers one, two, and three are council, town minute and a ratifying appointment of Lieutenant Rico Taparranzo as interim police chief.
Okay, thanks, John.
Answering that text. Sorry.
Great.
Real quick.
Okay. So once again, in case you didn't know, so this is where we're receiving the written reports on our council member assignments. We're approving the minutes from? from from three previous town council meetings, and we're ratifying the appointment of Lieutenant Rico Tabaranza as the interim police chief. Any comments on those three items?
I see three raised hands. Next is Joe McGary, followed by Larry Bragman, followed by Veronica Gurets. Okay. So Joe, I've unmuted you.
Hi, good evening, council.
Good evening, Joe.
Hi. I, yeah, I just, I'd like to speak on agenda item three in the consent calendar. And just have some questions about the fiscal impact portion and and what's there in the MOU, the the contract with the Police Officers Association. There is a piece that that speaks to compensation for interim police chief, and just wondering why there's a variance in between that document and what's in the the staff report here. And in the document, it calls for 5% of base salary, and I think we're doing 15% is the recommendation. So just looking for some clarity in that. But fully supporting Lieutenant Tabaranza's appointment and just maybe bring up also, just in related to to items in the consent, the consent calendar, you know, is intended for routine items, and the people of this town have clearly stated over the last six months that no item related to policing is routine. The Town of Fairfax has formed a committee to address racial equity and social justice and a subcommittee on policing and alternatives, and that in itself acknowledges the overlap of policing and racism. And I know, no, none of us would ever label racism as routine. So we ask, you know, that the town refrain from putting any police-related items into the consent calendar moving forward. This this request is not implying any intent, but merely a moment of growth and an opportunity to ensure all police issues are presented with full transparency as we continue to reimagine public safety in Fairfax. Yeah, and just looking forward to clarification on the fiscal impact piece. Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much, Joe. Are there other public comments?
Yes, there are. Then the next speaker is Larry Bragman, followed by Veronica Gurets. And Larry, I've unmuted you now.
Can you hear me now? Okay. I just wanted to also support Lieutenant Tabaranza as interim chief. I think we're lucky to have him. I think it's a testament to the organization that we've got somebody like him waiting in the wings. And I can tell you from personal experience, he is a very compassionate, competent officer, and will really set an example. And I do think what Joe McGary said is is well taken. That point is well taken. And not only because of the community's current interests, but really because of its importance to us as a town. The Police Department really does reflect who we are as a community and as a town organization. So and I know you guys are really stepping up as far as examining what we do, how we do. And I think Lieutenant Tabaranza understands that, and will provide the leadership we need at a critical time. So I do support the nomination. And and thank you, Renee. I know it's not the right time to say it, but I thought what Shelby said was so heartfelt. You know, it was so, it's also well deserved. So thank you, and thank you all.
All righty. Thanks, Larry. Is there other public comment on consent?
The next speaker is Veronica Gurets. Veronica, I've unmuted you.
Thanks, Michelle. Hi, everybody.
Hi, Veronica.
And Michelle, no worries, because it's a tricky name to pronounce, but it's Garrett's, like carrots, but with a G.
I'm sorry. I'm glad you told me. Thank you.
Yeah. And I wanted to just, without repeating what Joe McGary said for the sake of time, to just underscore it. I'm really grateful for his continued support in the work of reimagining public safety in our community and really being an eye to examine policing and how we can grow and improve it. So I just really hope that indeed that's pulled from the consent calendar and that we are conscious of not putting anything related to policing and public safety in consent calendars moving forward. And look forward to getting to know Lieutenant Tabaranza more and hope that he'll consider really being engaged with our community in a face-to-face way. I'm just excited to be a part of what might be possible in collaboration as a community member with him and how we can really make sure that our community feels safe. And lastly, look forward to Bruce and Renee, the work that you're doing with the larger community committee around Sir Francis Drake renaming, and can't wait for that conversation at the 16th meeting, and will come ready to participate in whatever you decide that will look like. So thanks.
Thanks, Veronica. Any other public comment there?
I do not see any other public comment.
Okay, so I'd like to bring it back, and I do have a suggestion.
Before you do that, I just want to, I received information that Channel 27 got switched to the Symphony. I I sent a message to Michael Isomangaro of CMCM, and he switched it back. So we're now on Town of Fairfax again. So in case people miss, I think it was just a few minutes, but I want people to know Channel 27 is Town of Fairfax again. Sorry for interrupting, Mayor.
It's good to see where their priorities are. So again, back to to consent, my suggestion is that perhaps if Garrett has a response to Mr. McGary's inquiry, that we do that without pulling the item, because I'm just afraid with this agenda that we will not get to it. We usually would move a consent item that's pulled to the end of the agenda. So if that would satisfy, Stephanie, your your desire to pull it, we could ask Garrett to give us a a response. If it's not satisfactory, then we will pull it. Does that sound okay? Stephanie?
I'm fine with that, yeah.
Okay, Garrett, are you, are you able to do that? And if if we need more, then we will pull it and bring it back.
Sure. I can answer the question related to acting chief versus interim chief, if that was the core question, as I understood it. So how it works is the MOU does talk about acting chief. That section for acting chief is really related to shorter-term duration. So lieutenant, if the chief were to go on extended vacation, extended leave, lieutenant could serve as the chief for guidance and direction, but wouldn't do all the responsibilities and tasks that the chief would do during that thing, because the chief would be coming back. Similarly, when it talks about a vacant chief position, what that means, if if there is a gap between, a short gap, between, say, chief retiring and a new chief coming in, that short gap, you would need some leadership. And then that's where acting chief would come up. What we're actually talking about is an interim ratifying the appointment of an interim police chief, which, for the record, you talked about it in October. In October, we reported, we'd come back to you in December with the actual ratification, because it sounded like that time the council was in agreement that that would be fine. And the interim chief, what that is, that's going to be a longer duration. And the expectation is that Lieutenant Tabaranza would actually serve as the chief in terms of doing everything the chief does, whether it's filling in dispatch, doing all the appropriate paperwork, making decisions on different things, and everything that a chief does, that is a lot more comprehensive. And interim chief, not subject to the PLA, because Lieutenant Tabaranza, during that time period, would not be part of the PLA, and not technically part of that MOU. So it's a different way of looking at it. And the best way I use is, for the town manager, when I appoint an acting town manager, that's someone that people could turn to for guidance and decisions. But it's not, the expectation is they're not going to be doing everything that I would, I do as a town manager, whether it's public works, the HR issues, and all the other issues I have to respond to. So that's the primary difference. Interim police chief, not acting, all the responsibilities as a chief, and I believe the compensation is commensurate with that level of responsibility and expectation needed for the interim police chief.
Okay, so Stephanie, I'm going to put you on the hot seat. If that satisfies what you believe was the concern of the member of the public, then we can move forward. If not, we can pull it.
The only thing I wanted to add is, if you don't mind, Garrett and I had a conversation about this, and I think it would be helpful, Garrett, if you shared with the public that we anticipate February being the timeframe of creating a community panel and beginning the recruitment process.
Right. So what we had talked about, I reported back in March, and March, sorry, October, when I talked about this at the council, having the interim chief allows the council to have a more thoughtful, inclusive process. And the thought pattern is, you could start that process, think about things in February, then have a discussion of how you'd like to proceed related to the police chief position, whether that's doing the recruitment, you know, we have conducted the community survey by then. And so that's a thought pattern in February that you would start having your discussions and how you wanted to proceed related to the police chief. So it it makes it so that you have a timeframe, because at some point, your interim chief, you just can't have interim chief for that that long. It'll start to create different issues within in the department just because of the staffing.
Okay. Thank you very much. And I think we will, I would like to entertain a motion and and then carry on.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar, items one, two, and three, please.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion, Kohler, and a second, Reed. Councilmember Hellman?
Aye.
Councilmember Kohler?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ackerman?
Aye.
And myself, I vote aye. So moving on from consent to the regular agenda, which is the first part of the meeting's regular agenda, we will proceed with a proclamation in honor, in, excuse me, a proclamation in honor of Police Chief Moran. And I would like to give the honors over to Councilmember Kohler. Chief, welcome to the Zoom. And I will, I will hand you over to the loving hands of Barbara Kohler.
Thank you, Mayor, and thanks, Chief Moran, for joining us. And I think soon to be interim chief, Rico Tabaranza. I just want to warn people that since the chief has been a police officer for, oh, I don't know, close to 40 years, this is going to be 45 minutes. Just kidding. It is a long one, though. So there's some, it's a well-deserved one. So I will start now. Town of Fairfax proclamation in honor of Christopher Moran, Fairfax Chief of Police, 2010 through 2020. Whereas Christopher Moran began his illustrious law enforcement career in 1978 with the San Rafael Police Department, first as a police explorer, and then as police cadet, when he was sponsored and sent to the Santa Rosa Police Academy in 1983, where he graduated at the top of his class. And whereas Chief Moran continued to work for the San Rafael Police Department through 1990 as a California post-certified police officer, earning specialty assignments serving as a field training officer for new recruits and a sexual assault detective assisting in several high-profile investigations and homicides. And whereas, having solved all investigations in San Rafael and yearning for more action, the chief transferred to the Oakland Police Department. And whereas, with his strong work ethic and unique ability to build lasting relationships, Chief Moran was quickly recognized and assigned to a newly-formed specialty unit called the Community Policing Unit, which was comprised of 35 of the most skilled police communicators employed with the Oakland Police Department at the time. Each community policing officer was assigned a specific area to build community relations and trust, to instill unity among the police and Oakland residents. Immediately, Chief Moran proved to be highly successful and received the prestigious Police Officer of the Year Award in 1994. He was publicly honored by the Office of the Mayor for his community police efforts for the city of Oakland. Chief Moran was eventually promoted to the rank of police sergeant. He worked within several other specialty units, including the Internal Affairs Bureau of Investigations. And whereas, fortunately for us, in 2000, Chief Moran decided to return to his native Marin and specifically chose to work for the Town Fairfax Police Department, which happens to be where his father, Richard Moran, served at the time the chief was born. And whereas, with his wealth of knowledge and experience, Chief Chris Moran's skills and talents were soon recognized, and he began to develop strong relationships within the Fairfax community, becoming the go-to person for all residents, business owners, staff, supervisors, and chief. And whereas, he quickly rose to the rank of police sergeant in 2001 and excelled, serving in all capacities during his time as a Fairfax police sergeant. He was in charge of records, training, investigations, traffic, all personnel matters, and tasks with administrative roles, ultimately serving as an acting chief in 2010. Sorry about my landline. Whereas, after serving as acting chief for only a few days, Chief Moran was unanimously appointed as the permanent police chief in 2010. And whereas, Chief Moran is retiring this month after over 20 years of service to the people of the Town of Fairfax. And whereas, Chief Moran's accomplishments in the Fairfax Police Department are too many to count, and include the following among many more: creating and implementing a community-oriented policing philosophy and vision; creating and establishing a strong trust and open relationship among Fairfax residents and the Fairfax Police Department; upgrading the Fairfax Police Department standard equipment to the most current police trends of the 21st century; developing and implementing a community geared department police, department policy and procedure standard; ensuring the Fairfax Police Department had well-qualified diverse, sworn, and civilian staff and committed to community policing and progressive police practices; creating a mentorship philosophy and strong succession planning with all, within all ranks of the Police Department; providing departmental training and educational opportunities for all members of the Fairfax Police Department, with high emphasis on continued education and leadership; implementing the use and data management of body-worn cameras; creating opportunities for police participation in community programs such as the toy donation drives, drug take-back days, safe routes to school, PSPS charging stations, gun safety programs, the Pink Patch Project for breast cancer awareness, and Move Ember in support of men's health; implementing and advancing effective public communication and transparency through use of social media and a department website; implementing an emergency siren and emergency response procedure for the town; creating healthy relationships and partnerships with various outside agencies to gain use of additional resources for the Town of Fairfax. And whereas, Chief Moran has always worked hard, putting in even extra, more extra hours during the COVID-19 shelter-in-place orders, and ensuring the Police Department is always staffed to cover any and all emergencies; often filling in as a police officer, an unusual role for most police chiefs, but not for Chris. And whereas, Chief Moran works well with the town council, town staff, and more importantly, the Fairfax community and visitors to our town, and has earned the respect of all he encounters and the love of many in our town. And whereas, Chief Moran will be missed by the entire Fairfax Police Department, town staff, and town council, not just for us Town Staff, and Town Council, not just for his leadership, but for his sparkling wit, his fun-loving attitude, his cheerful energy, and his willingness to help and support others. Now therefore, be it hereby proclaimed in acknowledgement of his excellent leadership and dedication. And for his twenty years of exceptional service, hard work, and sense of humor, the Town Council and the Town of Fairfax hereby extends its gratitude and appreciation to Police Chief Christopher Moran and wishes him all the best in his well-deserved retirement. And be it further proclaimed that the Town of Fairfax is a much better place because Chris chose to live here and that December sixteen, twenty-twenty is Chief Moran Day in the Town of Fairfax. Signed the second day of December twenty-twenty, Renee Goddard, Mayor of Fairfax.
Thank you.
Wow. Chief Moran, do you have any words you'd like to say?
Well, I couldn't have written that any better myself, but you left off a couple of paragraphs. Uh, yeah, I could see. I don't know if this is gonna show up, but I just, let's see if I can get this on here. This is, let's see, here we go. Uh, there, that's what I looked like in nineteen eighty-three. I just figured I'd show that for my fans. Um, but but council member Kohler, thank you very much for that, that proclamation. I appreciate that tremendously. I do want to say that uh it has been an honor and a privilege to serve the town for the past twenty years uh in ten years as as the police chief. I'm, I've always been humbled by the support uh that has been shown me and the department in the entire time I've worked here. Um, it's the longest job I've ever had, ten years, as as a council member said, ten years at San Rafael, ten years in Oakland, and now twenty years uh here in Fairfax. And it's been the most enjoyable experience in 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 those forty years. Um, so that's what I'll I'll say about that. I appreciate, I appreciate everyone. Um, and 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 while this is about me, which I reluctantly agreed to do or allow allow council member Kohler to do, um, I do want to thank all those council members, past and present, who have been supportive of of me and the efforts of the entire Police Department in the manner in which we serve the town. And then lastly, I do want to acknowledge uh Town Manager Garrett Toy for his unyielding support of me and the Police Department uh when he came on. Uh, when he, when he did come on as our Town Manager, uh, he took over a very dysfunctional Town Hall. And for anyone who was around understands what I'm saying about that. He's done a lot of good for this town. He takes a lot of heat from the community and is a brunt of a lot of anger. But I can say from being on the inside, watching all the dynamics of what goes on, uh, he does not get anywhere near the credit he deserves uh for what he does for this town. So I just wanted to say that. Lastly, I'll say uh for those that aren't aware, I do plan on sticking around a little while as a reserve officer. Sometimes uh volunteered, sometimes paid a little bit to help with the short staffing supervision. So you, so you will still see me running around, but uh I won't have the responsibility or or be in charge or be able to tell anybody what to do. Okay, so I just wanted to say that. Uh, so once again, um it has been an honor and a privilege to serve the town and I appreciate everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Um, I think Garrett wants to say something.
Uh, well, first of all, thanks for those kind words and just be noted, I didn't put them up to that. It's actually been a pleasure working with you all this time. It's I think it's great. I think you've done a great job with the department. But I wanted to share the screen with the complimentary pen set that we gave you for your retirement. There you go. Hopefully spelled your name right. Okay, then.
Looks good. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Chief. You will be dearly missed, but it sounds like we're gonna get to run into you in town, so um so no words. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, so we are moving right along. Um, and item number five on
Oh, I'm sorry, Madam.
I'm sorry, I forgot public comment. I was overtaken. So um, public comment on um, on this item. Uh, if people would like to speak, go ahead and raise your hand and Michelle will call on you.
Yes, uh, the first speaker is Tunafish Salin, followed by Bert Barch, followed by Jane Richardson. So Mr. Salin, you're unmuted.
Oh, okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes, hi, Sierra.
Hey, Chris. I just want to say thank you. We're gonna miss you. Um, can I borrow your uniform?
The answer is always no to that, but thank you.
Take care, Chris.
All right, thank you.
Okay, the next speaker is, oh, now it's Jane Richardson Mack. And you're unmuted, Jane.
Actually, John Romadis is using my uh my hand.
Hi, uh, Christopher, Chief Moran, I want to say thank you first of all for your service. Uh, just kind of a funny little anecdotal story here. Uh, there was a time, a few years back, when there was a tire slasher going around Fairfax uh slashing tires. And I had a nineteen, I have a nineteen sixty Valiant. And the tires got slashed and I was livid. And then I think I called you and I demanded that, you know, fingerprints be taken to find out who this guy was. And you were very cordial and you came up and I believe you took fingerprints on my car. And um, you're very nice about it and I, you know, just want to say that uh i- in your term and your time in Fairfax, it's kind of felt like you've had your arms around us. Uh, and uh, I appreciate it. I wanted to just say thank you very much for everything. That's it. Thank you.
Uh, the next speaker is a call-in user, uh, number one. I'm not sure. I've unmuted you if you want to speak. You'll have to unmute yourself. Try pressing star six if you there.
Frank Agar here, Metaway. As a Fairfax official for fifty-four years, I have known and worked with seven Fairfax Police Chiefs. Cliff Cordes, Jim Orr, Chuck Grasso, Jim Anderson, Walt Potter, Ken Hughes, and Chris Moran. Chief Moran may well be the best police chief Fairfax has had since nineteen sixty-two. I knew Chief Moran's father, who was also a Fairfax Police Officer and worked for us uh while I was mayor. Earlier this year, California Attorney General Becerra, in response to nationwide issues of racial equity and social justice, set eight, eight benchmarks for local police departments to reach. At the time AG Becerra set those benchmarks, the Fairfax Police Department, under Chief Moran, met all eight of them. Fairfax Police Department is the most racially diverse department in Marin County. Sixty-four percent of our officers are or were uh people of color. That's how good Chief Moran is. Unfortunately, Fairfax Police Officers have been called racist. They have been flipped off, police cars vandalized, the Fairfax Police Office Association sign at the ballpark defaced. In my day job, I served as a team sergeant president representing one thousand employees. What has happened to Fairfax Police Officers is what we defined as a hostile work environment. Fairfax is the employer of our police officers. The Town Council and manager must be refuting any of these racist charges and comments against our police officers. Thank you very much and thank you, Chris Moran, for a heck of a, heck of a good ride.
Thank you, Frank.
The next speaker is Bert Barch, followed by Deborah Benson. Oh, I believe this is actually Valerie.
Hi, I just wanted to say, Chris, that um you made me understand the um the way police should handle themselves. I don't know how else to say it. I um, I grew up really admiring police like most people did. You had my little my little badge that I would wear, all the kids did, back in the fifties. And then the sixties came and things weren't so great for a while. And you changed my perspective on on, 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 on the idea that community policing could actually occur in a town. And I've been here long enough to know when it wasn't happening. And the idea of losing you is very sad for many of us. I'm, I'm so ashamed of our council. I, I can't say anything else. I when I, I, I won't talk about it so much, but I really expected more. Um, and um you didn't deserve this and we thank you from the bottom of our hearts. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Valerie.
The next speaker is Deborah Benson, followed by Larry Bragman. Deborah.
Hello, Deborah Benson, Cascade Drive. I also am very sad to see you go. The, the uh force that you have created, the team that you have created for our town uh should be a shine, held up as a shining beacon for uh how community police should operate. And um I am, I am also very sad that you have, your force has had to put up with um disparagement, especially over the last months, six months or so. And um I feel a lack of support for you from our council members. And um I'm sad about that. I, I appreciate everything you do, everything you've done. You are the best of the best. You outshine the rest. And I'm glad we'll be seeing you around somewhat. And welcome to Rico and his, and his new role. So thank you again, Chris.
Thank you, Valerie, for those words. Deborah, I'm sorry.
The next speaker is Larry Bragman, followed by Barbara Petty. Larry? Larry, can you unmute yourself?
I, I stayed up past my bedtime to uh say a kind word and really weigh in because um you know, from the viewpoint of serving with Chris as a member of the council to being a member of the community that has benefited from the courage, compassion, competence, and integrity that have been the hallmark of his career. I just want to say thanks. Um, and I think the community has benefited so much by your example and you know, I hope the past is prologue. I hope your legacy is the leadership you've shown. And um just want to wish you the very best and thank you again for everything you've done for the community and uh thanks a lot, Chris.
Thank you, Larry.
The next speaker is Barbara Petty, followed, oh, Barbara Petty.
Hi, uh, hi, Chris. Um, just to be a little bit brief, um uh, in addition to the obvious appreciation for all your work around the town, I was just thinking about, you know, seeing you at the Halloween parade and the bike and walk to school parade with kids and you working at the festival. And when I used to have to walk up to the podium and talk about numbers I don't think anybody cared about, it was nice to see your friendly face at the side table. So um, I guess if nobody's gonna talk you out of this, um, I just wish you well and best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
The next speaker is Veronica Garretts. Did I get it right? You're unmuted, I think.
Veronica, and um, I've been asked to unmute.
Whoops, I'm sorry, Jane. I got the wrong click. Okay, you go first if that's okay.
Okay, thank you. I just want to say thank you also to Chief Moran. I think you're just, you handled all of this so elegantly when it could very easily have gone the other way. You were subjected to some rather unpleasant times. And unfortunately, some of our very own elected officials were part of things that should not have happened. And I'm sorry for that. You deserved ever so much better and I'm glad that people are showing their appreciation for you and letting you know how much we will miss you. Um, I think you could give lessons to those who are thinking about schooling the Police Department. Maybe if they're wise, they'll ask you for some of your advice because you, you handled it uh in the, it's the gold standard, as many have said. So take that with you. There far more of us, I would probably say the majority of Fairfaxians salute you and thank you and actually wish you were staying. But anyway, good luck and have fun and be carefree and thank you.
Thank, thank you, Jane.
And the next speaker is Veronica Garretts. Sorry about that mix-up.
That's okay. Michelle, you got it right. Thank you. Chief Moran, I just wanted to thank you for responding right after George Floyd's murder, when I reached out for um, your support in connecting with my son as a as a boy of color in this community and wanted him to feel safe with police. And you responded quickly and swiftly and made time to welcome him into the into your office and sat down with him and want to let you know that you, you, you succeeded in him feeling safe with you and with the police force here in Fairfax, and I'm really grateful for it. And um respect how you've shown up and hope that folks recognize that there's a system that we're addressing and certainly not you. Um, we, we, I, I respect you. So thank you.
Thank you, Veronica.
Uh, Madam Mayor, there are no more speakers. May, may I, as a member and resident of the Town of Fairfax, say something now?
You, you absolutely may.
No.
No, you may not. Is it chief?
Chief. It's really been a pleasure working with you. I'm going to miss you. You know it. And I don't think every, everybody knows what it's like to have the chief in Town Hall, supporting and mentoring really every member of staff. He's managed to build a relationship with each and every one of us and everybody is going to miss him deeply. So um thank you, Chief, for everything.
Thank you, Michelle.
Okay. Comments. Okay, thanks, Michelle. Um, so uh, we're moving on to the next item on the agenda. Chief, are you gonna hang out? It'll probably be late until about
I'm off video, but I'll be, I'll be back later.
Oh, yes, you will. Okay, thank you. All right, see you soon.
Very much.
So item number five on the regular agenda of the first half of the meeting is to adopt a resolution reciting the fact, nope, yes, yes, sorry. Reciting the fact of the general election held on November third, twenty-twenty, declaring the result and such other matters as provided by law. Uh, and the staff report will be delivered by our town clerk. Madam Clerk, if you will. Uh, and the staff report will be delivered by our town clerk, Madam Clerk, if you will.
I thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, yes, as you just noted, we. Had a, an election on November 3rd. It was for the Office of Town Council Member. There were five candidates and there are three seats. The top three vote getters were elected and um. State law does require that you adopt a resolution. Reciting the fact of the election and declaring the results and luckily, the registrar voters just certified the election today. Uh. So a few hours ago, which I was able to post the resolution to complete it and post it online and send it to the council. For consideration tonight. Um, and as everybody I think knows by now, the top three vote getters were Chance Cutrano. Barbara Kohler and Bruce Ackerman. And so they were officially elected. And I might also add that the turnout in Fairfax was, get it right, 90.6%. Which is pretty high. And we also had about 500 extra people sign up, register to vote. So that was great.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you for that. Um. Well, I would like to know if there is any public. Comment on that or actually let's start with council. Any questions? Um. Nothing from council, so out to the public.
Okay. It looks like we have one comment and that is. Ruby Chirapunova. I could never say it. I'm really sorry, Renee. And Ruby. Okay, Ruby, you're unmuted.
Hi.
Okay, yeah. Yes, and full disclosure, this, this is my daughter, Ruby. And I didn't know she was calling. So go ahead, Ruby.
Good evening, Town Council. All right.
Ruby, you're cutting it now.
Town Council. My name is Ruby Chirapunova. Can you hear me better now?
Yes.
A little bit.
Yes.
Okay, try again.
All right, um, my name is Ruby Chirapunova and I would like to say a big thank you to everyone on the council. Your hard work is appreciated by many, but not vocally acknowledged enough. I wanted to say something to everyone that is planning to speak tonight or that usually speaks at these meetings. The five humans that are up there are just people. They are people that care deeply for this town and work very, very hard in order to represent us. It takes a lot of courage to be up there in front of. The public and I thank you all for the time and dedication you all put into this work. I hope that we can all take a moment before speaking to realize that it is so important. Especially right now with all the craziness going on, to pause and think about how we deliver our message. Fairfax is filled with passionate people that have strong beliefs and is, is an amazing thing. It's what makes this town so special. Let's all channel that passion and work together. New, new and amazing opportunities for this town are endless. I want to send special appreciation to John. Thank you for always being so kind and caring through our interactions and thank you for your many, many years of service to this town. Congratulations to Chance for being elected to the council. Fairfax awaits your energy and vision and I am excited to see what you do. Finally, thank you Mayor Goddard for always leading with compassion and humility. Your attentiveness and care for this town is so, so admirable. I wish everyone the best and I send tons of gratitude to all the hardworking Fairfax citizens during these tough times. Please remember to wear a mask and be kind to those around you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruby.
Thank you.
Did not put her up to that. Okay, do we have any other speakers on this item?
I do not see any other speakers.
Okay, um, so. Sorry, I got discombobulated. So we need to adopt this resolution. So um. If there are no other comments from council, go ahead and entertain an emotion, an emotion, a motion for the adoption of the resolution.
I'll make. Lift onto it.
Yeah. Resolution.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion read and a second caller. Um, Councilmember Hellman.
Aye.
Uh, Councilmember Kohler.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
You bet.
Vice Mayor Ackerman.
Yes.
And myself, I vote yes. So the motion carries and the resolution is adopted. Okay, moving right along. Um. Now, a very exciting moment. Um, I have the great privilege and honor of um. Reading this proclamation. It's very, very long because the accomplishments of Mr. John Addison Reed. Um, fill lots and lots of pages. So you earn every single one of these words and the time that it takes to deliver them. So please sit back. And relax and receive this with all of our gratitude. Um, this is the town of Fairfax proclamation in honor of John Addison Reed, Fairfax Town Council Member from 2009. To 2020. Whereas John Reed has been a resident of Fairfax since 1991 and has always been an active and involved citizen. And whereas John and his wife Jo have lived in Fairfax for more than three decades and their son graduated from Manor Elementary, White Hill Middle School and Drake High. And whereas John has worked on 35 feature films doing special effects and model making, mold making and puppet creation. And is perhaps best known for his puppets in the movie The Nightmare Before Christmas. And whereas John is also a bass player, an inventor, an artist with degree in sculpture from Pratt University. No, Pratt Institute, an all-around nice guy who was born on the East Coast and grew up in Holland, France, England. And whereas John has a big heart and a strong mind, which together with his creative. And building skills has been a true asset in his many volunteer positions for the town of Fairfax even before joining the council. And whereas in 2003, John was appointed to the Fairfax Volunteer Board where he served as chair for seven years. Initiating programs such as neighborhood brush clearing, improving pedestrian trails and the town picnic. And whereas John served on the Fairfax General Plan Advisory Committee for eight years. Where he offered the study that qualified Fairfax for millions of dollars in grant funding and provided a springboard for grants that followed. And whereas John served on the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee where he worked on the Fairfax Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan. And later as a part of a town council subcommittee, John worked on updates to the plan. And whereas a committed biking advocate, John was a founding member of Fairfax Safe Routes Schools. And worked to obtain funding for critical bike infrastructure. And took a leading role in completing the striping of bike lanes on Sir Francis Drake Boulevard. And whereas John Reed was first elected to the Fairfax Town Council in 2009. And has served three consecutive terms, including two years as mayor and two years as vice mayor. And whereas John's. Hallmark has been finding solutions everyone can live with. And many of his accomplishments are based on a model of collaboration and compromise. As exemplified by his work negotiating, negotiating a neighborhood compromise in the Deer Park neighborhood regarding noise from Deer Park Villa. And whereas John mobilized the volunteer efforts during the flood of 2005 and subsequently made floodgate plans available for all. And whereas John sponsored the council's endorsement of the successful reform of Prop 13 to allow the reassessment of large commercial and industrial properties. While keeping protection for housing intact. And whereas John knows and loves every square inch of this town and his passion for the preservation of local trails. And his incredible knowledge of exactly where they all are will go down in history. And whereas John advocated for and led the improvement of the pedestrian trails network throughout town. Publishing trail maps online, working with neighbors and volunteers to build steps and working with the Conservation Corps. Of the North Bay to improve more trails. And whereas. John has been committed to, to protecting the environment through obtaining grants to fund the town's electric vehicle charging station. Advocating to secure a hazardous fuel reduction grant. Resulting in the biggest chipper day effort the town has seen in decades and sponsoring the resolution to discourage the sale and use of redenticides. And whereas John supported the streetlight conversion to energy-saving LEDs and worked to ensure that the LED bulbs. Were the friendly, warm, cooler version and designed and produced shields for them. And whereas John has consistently advocated for an innovative, people-centered, community-centered and planet-centered vision for the movement. And for the movement of people and goods. And whereas, as the representative of the Fairfax Town Council. John served on many committees and boards, most notably the Ross Valley Fire Board, serving as chair in 2019. The Ross Valley Paramedics Authority and the Transportation Authority of Marin. And whereas John is respected by the town council, his peers, the citizens of Fairfax and everyone who has worked with him due to his commitment. Dedication. And local expertise. Now therefore, be it hereby proclaimed, then in acknowledgement of his exemplary service, dedication and commitment. And many contributions to the town and to the community, the town of Fairfax thanks John Reed. And wishes him success in his future endeavors. And be it further proclaimed that the town of Fairfax is a much. Much better place because John chose to live here. And be it further proclaimed that December 2nd. 2020 is hereby proclaimed John Reed Day in the town of Fairfax. And this is signed on this second day of December, 2020. Thank you, John.
Well, thank.
Alrighty, so um, John, would you like to say a few words or, you know, you could just bask in this for a while if you like?
I know, yeah, I, I wrote up a thing, but boy. Um, December 2nd is almost over though. Couldn't you make?
I know.
Um, I, I know, I, I guess, I, yeah, I wrote up a little speech, but um, I don't know, I, I wanted to thank everybody. I mean, it's. And I'm not going to read the speech exactly, but. So I'll spare you that, but really I, I've said over the years. To a lot of people that I wouldn't want to do. This, you know, being on the council and stuff in any place except for in Fairfax because this community is. A really special one, as everybody knows, because they choose to live here also. I mean, Fairfax is a really special place and it's. Uh, people really care about it and, and you know. Uh, an IJ reporter just said, you know, Fairfax is way different than any other place. You know, all the people are really engaged. They care about it and. You know, you could go to sleep in most other council meetings, but ours is a little different. And you know, sometimes that's good, sometimes that's bad. But um. But it's always interesting. Um, and I, I really wouldn't want to do it in any other place because Fairfax is a wonderful place and. Um, I love Fairfax. Lots of people and, and, and. I hope that I've left the trail that other people can hopefully follow also that compromise and. And finding that middle place where. Everybody can accept everybody else and move forward and get along is really the best place to be. And I know. That most people in Fairfax really. They care and they also see the value in that and they, they, they uh. You know, it's, it's, everybody cares about it. Some people choose to get angry. It's better to see the human side in all of us and we all have a human side, even those. Who choose to be angry. And um. It's, it's really good to open your heart to the human side of everybody. Um, there, there's a reason. Um. Let me see, I guess my biggest sorrow is that most people in Fairfax don't really know what the council. Deals with. I mean, yes, we have these meetings and we talk about this stuff, but. We deal with real human problems, real people call us up and talk out stuff and we try to seek solutions for people. It's not always just sitting in a meeting and talking about stuff. Um. And making difficult decisions, but. One of the things that. We don't get to talk about as council people is what we really feel and think about something. I mean, one example is the wall property, for instance. All of us have an opinion about it, but none of us can say what that is because if we do, we're disqualified from a vote when it finally comes up to that. One evening when you're supposed to do all your thinking in public and bring it all up at that one time. You can't say it ahead of time. Um, you have to weigh out all the different sides and, and really make a conscientious decision. And so people are like, I don't get it. Why aren't they just coming out and saying what they, ever they think? And that's the way the legal process works on the council. So. Now I'm happy that I can express my opinion and. And not have to worry about getting disqualified off of a vote. Um, you know, that, that's kind of nice and. You know, I'll, I'll be back, probably not every time because you know, it, it's nice to not have to go to council meetings every time, but um.
John, you only, you'll only get three minutes, though.
Yeah, I'll only get three minutes, but you know, maybe I'll try to start a, you know, we love Fairfax group, so I get five or something. But um. Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll still continue with the trails. There's two trails right now that are being opened. By concerned neighbors that, I mean, they're, you know, getting get reimbursed for some materials and stuff like that. And people really like the trails. I love the trails. If you like to walk on the trails. You know, talk to me. Uh, you know, I'm at Fairfaxian.com, you know, but uh, whatever. Um. There is a map of all the trails on Fairfax, Fairfaxian.com and it's a really good, good, high resolution one. So check it out. Um. Let me see, I, I look forward to not having to go to all the council meetings, but I'll be back for some of them. And uh. You know, I, I thank everybody on the council and particularly town staff. Uh. I, Garrett reminded me that I'm the last person on the council that actually hired him and it, Pam Hartwell and I. Were the two that hired Garrett Toy. Pam said to me before she left town. Um, that if there's one good thing that she could do for Fairfax is hire Garrett Toy because. We found him to be the most honest and humble. Person that we could that we, out of, we looked at quite a few different candidates for uh, town manager. And really Fairfax deserves a good, honest town manager, we felt, and. We've got one in Garrett and you know, he, he takes a lot of heat. It's true. And he does a lot of jobs and. God knows, he finds all the minutes in the day to do them all. It's, it's impressive and um. So I'm really proud of that and also, you know, voting to uh. Elevate Chief Moran to the police chief was also something that I remember doing, which. He, he's a great guy too and I'll miss him. I'll, I'll enjoy seeing him around town. I don't know how many times. Month I run into him just in his shorts or whatever, right? You know, Bermuda shorts, no. Anyway, I, I could go on and on and I'd love to. Oh, I'm glad you're listening. Oh, you're muted, Chris.
Yeah, but wait a minute, in my shorts? Come on.
Bermuda.
Okay.
I, you know.
Okay, John, let's open it up to public comment in case anyone wants to say anything nice about you. Um, Garrett.
Garrett's got his hand up.
So uh, I'd like to, on behalf of staff and myself, really thank John for all his work as a council member. He's one of the. Biggest supporters of staff, great wealth and knowledge, Goja guy, really knows construction. And I've personally really benefited from that relationship and knowledge, plus obviously he is the last council member that hired me, but. Um, we have prepared what we give to council members and I'll share the screen. Your, oops. Uh, is it doing? Oh, it's not doing it. How about now? Oh, there we go. So we like to present you with your pen or bamboo pen set, being on the council. Um, we have some other things for you too and we'll, we'll give you that later when we can meet you in person. But again, really appreciate all your work as a council member. Appreciate all the support and. Um, we're really going to miss you on the council.
Yeah. Well, I'll miss being on the council and I'll miss you too. Thanks.
Uh, may I say something or would you prefer waiting till after public comment?
Let's go to public comment and then come back and then, and then we have to start to be mindful of the fact that we have a. Large agenda, although I would love to do this all night. I'm sure the public are chomping at the bit. So um. Michelle, let's see if anyone in the public wants to speak and then we'll bring it back for a few comments from council.
Okay, um, yes.
Okay, um, yes, we do have several members of the public. Um, I'll, I think I will start with Supervisor Rice. Oh, wait, are, I, I think I found you to do. Are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, Katie.
Yeah, hi there. Hey, John, I broke away from the symphony. Not just kidding, I've been here all the way, all the way through. And actually, before I, um, say my thanks to you, I just want to, um, say to all of you, I really appreciate all, all the comments right from the get-go, your opening remarks, your reflections, your expressions of your experience of COVID, general humanity, your appreciation of your great chief. Um, it's really actually been a, a really, a really beautiful council meeting up, up to now, even if it hasn't been a lot of business. But the reason I broke away from the symphony was to, um, just say to John, um, really going to miss you. We've worked together on a lot of different stuff over the years. You have always been a pleasure to work with and, um, I just wanted to make sure that you knew how much I appreciated you, um, personally, but also on, on behalf of the broader Ross Valley community, your service on the RVPA and Ross Valley Fire and TAM and Safe Routes and all the other stuff. I mean, you've always, you've always been a steady presence. You've always had a unique perspective, um, that actually has really, um, helped round out a discussion and a conversation. And I would say, just like the, uh, light bulbs that you installed, you've always been friendly, warm, and very cool. So thank you, John. Enjoy your time off the council. You are gonna love these Wednesday night back, these Wednesday nights.
Take care.
Thank you.
Thanks, Katie. Um, and, and any other public comment?
Uh, yes, we have Tuna Fish Salin and Larry Bragman, so Tuna Fish, you're first.
I just want to say, thank you, John. You've done so much for the town. I don't think most people have any idea. And I know how many calls you've gotten, like trees down, mudslides, um, flooding, car batteries dead, whatever. It's like, if you need help, call John. Um, that's just the kind of guy he is and he's gonna keep on being that way. And I think you're gonna have, you're gonna have to find something else to do with yourself. It's like you might be bored for 20 minutes until you find something else, maybe, but I think you've probably got enough on your plate to keep you busy without the council. And I'd take you out for a drink, but everything seems to be closed at the moment. Thank you and good luck.
Okay, next public comment, please.
Next is Larry Bragman. You're unmuted.
Hi, John. Just wanted to, uh, weigh in. We served five years together.
Something like that.
But really, um, Holly reminded me sort of of the, of the time, I think, I really understood really your importance to the town, which was after the flood in '05, when there was so much confusion in the town and you organized a network of cell phones, which at that time was new technology, at least for me. And, you know, you really kind of knitted the town together when it really needed it and when it really was sort of, uh, had been pretty battered by that flood. So, um, that, that moment, that time, I think about, um, and then going forward with the trails where it's another thing you did to really knit the town together. And I, I just, you know, I, it's like Citizen Reed, you know? And, um, you really do epitomize that spirit of service and tolerance that I think is really sort of the heart and soul of Fairfax, even with all the differences in the community. Tolerance, mutual respect, so important. And, and you exemplify that and, uh, you're just a good dude, man. And, um, I hope to see you in your retirement. Indian food with you. And I think Holly wants to say something.
Yeah, I just wanted to riff a little off of, uh, what Sierra said, because I was remembering how every year we tried to figure out the town picnic music, um, the chord that would hook it up and, and to spare you having to come back and do it, but we never could. So it was always like, better call John Reed. We gotta get into the tower. Nobody knows how to work this chord. Or, you know, same thing like with setting up the, the whole light situation in the tents at the, at the, um, at the wreath making and, um, EcoFest stuff. I mean, there's so many times where it's like, we gotta call John Reed. We need the little truck and we need the guy who knows how to work all this stuff. Oh, thanks, John.
Who are you gonna call? John Reed. Okay, we're done. We'll see you around, John.
Okay.
Thanks a lot.
Uh, the next speaker is Chance Cutrano, uh, followed by Deborah Benson. Chance, you're unmuted.
Thank you very much, Michelle. Good evening, council. I'm just commenting as a member of the public. Uh, John, I, um, I remember the first couple of times that uh, I saw you around town, uh, joining the volunteer board. You were coming to the meetings and following up on that, I really felt like I got to know you a bit better through the creek cleanups. And it became sort of an exciting time, uh, to be with you is to walk through the creeks and hear stories about Fairfax. And to, uh, you know, you just, you have so many good nuggets. Uh, and, and it felt like, feels like every time I run into you in town, it's, it's that way. You just, you hold so much of the history of this town and what goes on here and you understand the, the heartbeat of this town. And I, I just want to, you know, thank you for, for your, your friendship and your mentorship over the years now. And I also wanted to say, I, I thought it was great that you opened with how you hoped you'd, uh, you'd left a trail or you're, you're leaving a trail for people to follow and then you closed your remarks talking about, uh, the ongoing, the ongoing trail maintenance that you'll be doing here in town and in our open space. And so I just wanted to, from the bottom of my heart, uh, thank you for all of your trail work, both physical and metaphysical. And, uh, I really look forward to, uh, ongoing collaborations with you moving forward. Thanks.
Likewise, and congratulations.
Next, next public comment, please.
Um, next public comment is, sorry, Deborah Benson, you're unmuted now.
Hello, thank you. Um, John, short and sweet. Thank you so much for your service. Long time. Um, a lot of issues. Fairfax is a pretty vocal community and a lot to, a lot to suss out. So thank you. And thank you also for getting that trail from Cascade Drive up to Pine Drive working. Much appreciated.
Sure.
That's all. Have a good time.
Okay, so, uh, any other public comment?
I do not see any other public comment, except, um, may I say something as a resident?
Yes, you may, Michelle.
Sorry, take everyone's time, but John, um, I've really, really enjoyed working with you from the very beginning when I first started as town clerk, but even before then, uh, we met as parents walking our kids to Manor Elementary back in their early 2000s. And, um, even then, we, he was talking about, we need to get a ri, a pedestrian bridge next to the Little Manor Bridge and we need to get a crosswalk for the children. And it took years, but you did it. And, uh, ever since, you've just been doing all those physical improvements to this town, but also, as everybody says, it's always with heart and there's just something so warm and welcoming and I, you know, I'm gonna miss you. So thank you for your service.
May I say something, Mayor, as a resident?
Yes, please.
Okay, I just want to say, John, I think Renee and I have served the longest with you and it's really been a pleasure. And I think my most day-to-day experience with you is when I horded in on working on the pedestrian trails with you and getting the Conservation Corps involved and we got a lot of movement. And you continued to just be a shining light on those trails. And also during the evacuation maps, I said, we gotta get John here, because John knows the streets, the trails, better than anyone, including, I think, fire. So John just really helped, uh, make sure that we had those right. And we put just the trail that were really workable in the event of disaster. And, um, I did ensure that John would continue to work on pedestrian trails, uh, with me, hopefully. And, uh, John, you, you're just a really, I've always told people, you're a really good guy. I'm gonna miss you. Sorry.
Is there any other council comment, uh, Bruce?
Yeah, um, I guess I'll speak as a citizen as well, because John and I have worked together for years before either of us were on the council, certainly many years before I was on the council. And, um, I just, a lot of what I was, wanted to say has been said many times, but I, I, uh, I, you have taught me a lot and I hope will continue to teach me. And the thing that, that always stands out, um, about John is your humility. So I just wanted to acknowledge that. Kind of thank you very much.
Okay, everyone. Um, I feel as though it's time for us to move forward.
Well,
Okay.
Making it even at 30 seconds longer, I just wanted to say thank you to everybody. I mean, it, it takes a, uh, it takes a village and this is a great town. And, um, and I love being a part of it and I love all of you being a part of it, too. And, um, who knows how long this council meeting will last tonight, but you'll got plenty of them in the future. Yeah, don't use them all up in one go, no. Anyway, it, it's been a pleasure. I, I really, uh, this has actually been the longest job I've ever had in my life. I've worked on a whole lot of, I mean, fortunately, film work, you, you know, you do it for whatever it is and it's over and then you get to go home and rest, but this, it just keeps on coming back and keep, you know. But it's a very satisfying job and it's, it's, you get to really, you know, help real situations in people's lives and you help people to go, and the pay is so great, too. I mean, that's bucks. Anyway.
All right, Mr. A.
All very much for putting up for my long diatribes and, um, I will be back for my three minutes occasionally.
Okay, we will miss you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, John. Be well.
Thank you, Stephanie.
All right, everyone. Thank you, members of the public, for your patience. We will move right along to item number seven on our agenda. Um, and this is the moment you've all been waiting for. This is to administer the oath of office to our newly elected officials. And I am going to leave this in the, in the able hands of Michelle Gardner, our town clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, the first thing I'd like to do is invite Chance Cutrano, our newly elected council member, up to the dais, so to speak. Uh, Chance, if you could raise your hand. I don't see you. Oh, yes, I do. Okay, I'm going to add you to the screen. I hope you're ready. I don't see you. Yes, I do.
There you go.
Congratulations. Welcome.
Thanks, hey.
Okay, so, yes, Chance is our newly elected council member and along with Barbara and Bruce, I guess I should say Bruce Ackerman and Barbara Kohler. And, um, the state constitution requires that we administer the oath of office uh, to newly electeds before they begin their terms. And tonight is when that happens, after the oath of office, um, you will begin your terms. So would those three newly electeds, please raise your right hands and repeat after me. And when I say state your name, I'll just call on each of you, just, we'll go one by one to call your names out and then, oops, I need to get my oath, just so. And, um, there we go. We'll sign the oaths later. I'll, I'll contact you individually. All right, I, and we'll, maybe we'll go in order, because on my screen, it's Barbara, Bruce, and Chance. So I, Barbara?
Barbara Kohler.
Bruce?
Bruce Ackerman.
Chance?
Chance Cutrano.
And then you all together will repeat after me. Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support and defend
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or, well, we'll go there. Without any mental reservation.
Reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully
And that I will well and faithfully
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
The duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Are starting your terms?
Welcome, Chance.
Welcome, Chance.
And I might note that this is a four-year term of office now. We are out of our three-year special terms.
Yay.
Well, I think we're all gonna have to work on our synchronicity. That was, that was a mighty fine effort, you all. All right, well, welcome to you, Chance, and, uh, and we are going to be diving right into the next item, um, at the crack of nine o'clock. Um, we will, actually, before we do that, I think I need to go out to, uh, public comment, just to see if anyone out there has anything to say about this.
You had wanted to do the town manager's report at this point?
I, I've, I've got it all figured out, but I do need to, um, see if there's any public comment on this.
There, there is one, one public comment from, oh, actually two now. Karen, we'll start with you. I've unmuted you. You may have to unmute yourself. Okay, um, I am going to go to the next speaker, if that's okay, and see if, um, you can figure that out. In the meantime, Karen, the next speaker is Veronica Garretts, and I have unmuted you.
Ms. Michelle, congratulations, Councilmember Cutrano.
I can't wait to see how you're going to continue to serve our community. It's been really inspiring, to say the least, to watch you galvanize your support and really establish the integrity that you have already with our council members and with our community. Yeah, thanks for showing us how it's done. Congratulations.
Okay, thank you. And if the other speaker is accessible, we invite her in, and if not, we'll move along.
Karen, I've, I've sent you a message to ask you to unmute. I don't know.
Okay.
It doesn't seem to be working. I'm sorry.
Okay.
You can always send an email that will, I'll pass along to the council.
All right, so as this is a very interesting meeting, everyone, we are now going to go back to a matter of far more serious content. And what we did in reorganizing the agenda is to move the staff managers, I mean, the town manager's report in order to allow for Chief Moran to deliver a statement and and a report of the incidents of November 24th. So I will turn this right over to the chief and thanks for being here, Chris.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so as we all know, we had an incident in town last week that was very disturbing to all of us, and I've been asked to give an update to the community of where we're at with what happened. I do want to comment that despite the fact that my police department pushed that information on Nextdoor as well as the Next advisory on this matter, there persisted a lot of misinformation on social media and a letter to the E D and the I J relative to this matter. I know it's hard to get in front of these things with the social media as it is, but it continues to have misinformed or ill-informed information out there. So I think this is a good opportunity to let the community know what, what we're doing. The person involved in this incident is a 19-year-old from Livermore. He was in town in our area because he was visiting family. That's why he was here from Livermore. He was, as we all know, he was seen posting swastika stickers in the downtown area. One of our officers, who was on routine patrol, saw disturbance in the parcade and was subsequently flagged down by a witness to report what had occurred. Nobody prior to this had called our office despite, despite seven to nine minutes where this person was being videotaped throughout the parcade and the downtown area. No one called us, but the officer was flagged down when he saw the disturbance. We detained the person and we interviewed and interrogated him. More follow-up was necessary. We also interviewed witnesses at the time, and more follow-up was necessary on what crimes may have been committed in this matter. So we had released the person pending follow-up of that investigation, which is standard procedure and very common in many, many cases that we as police investigate. Subsequently, I think it was a day and a half later or a day later, we sent our reports to the district attorney's office, even though we had additional follow-up to do, and we requested charges against this person for various hate-related crimes and as well as vandalism. The district attorney reviews all cases that are sent to them, and they're the ones that determine if a crime has been committed and if elements of those crimes have been met. We are still awaiting their decision on the case that we submitted to them, that they are actively working on since we submitted it. And, and they continue to be in daily communication with Lieutenant Tabaranza on this investigation, which he is in charge of. The person's name in this incident has not been released. Until he is charged with a crime, we will not release his name, nor will the district attorney. When or if this person or any person is charged with a crime, then the name becomes a matter of public record and it will be released. It would not be appropriate to name the person if the district attorney ultimately tells us that the person did not commit a crime, specifically hate-related crime. That would be unfair to anybody. The officers, again headed by Lieutenant Tabaranza, are continuing to conduct follow-up, necessary and needed follow-up, and it remains an active investigation, even though it has been submitted to the district attorney. We also, I will say, we also believe that there may be a mental health issue involved in this matter with the person, which further complicates this case. And that's all I can say about it at this time, but that's where we're at and that's what had occurred.
Okay, Chief, thank you so much for the excellent report. It's always very helpful to hear from you. Appreciate it. And following the chief's report to the community, I wanted to follow up with a statement that I crafted at this point. I would, I would imagine, and I can't speak for my council, but I would imagine that the council would echo the sentiments in this statement, and we can bring it back to, to work through an official statement from the town council, should we choose to do that at, at our meeting mid-December. So for now, I wanted to respond immediately. November 30th through December 6th is United Against Hate Week. It just so happens. So in light of this incident, I've written that the Fairfax Town Council is deeply disturbed by the incident on November 24th. This was a blatant expression of hate, and we condemn this anti-Semitic incident and all manifestations of white supremacy, racism, and bigotry. The Nazi swastika remains the most potent symbol of deadly hatred toward Jews. Throughout the incident, the offender repeatedly affirmed Nazi genocidal beliefs and expressed Holocaust denial. This action, while very visible, is but one expression of the racism, prejudice, and xenophobia that has terrorized marginalized communities since the conception of this nation. During the incident, the offender also spoke disparagingly about Black Lives Matter. We acknowledge the animus expressed toward African-Americans, even as the primary target in this case is Fairfax's Jewish residents. As Fairfax residents, we know the antidote to this hateful act is to come together, to bring awareness to these intolerable offenses, to educate our neighbors about injustice and to heal. This incident calls for action beyond words of condemnation and provides an opportunity for the community to make a long-term commitment to standing up to hate and reaffirming the town's core values of inclusion, that Jews and all others are safe and welcome in Fairfax. The Fairfax Town Council formally expresses our gratitude and admiration to Fairfax resident Noah Moham for courageously calling out these hateful actions. Noah's quick response and capture of the incident on video reminds us that we are always obligated to speak up and speak out against injustice, however uncomfortable it may be. In my conversation today with DA Fergoli, she stated, "Our office takes crimes of hate seriously, as well as our ethical obligation to file criminal charges when we believe we are able to prove the charges beyond a reasonable doubt." As the district attorney's investigation continues to play out, this council will remain proactive in addressing the concerns of our fellow residents, particularly, particularly those of our Jewish community members. In addition, we will seek out the recommendations on actionable next steps from our colleagues on the town's racial equity and social justice committee. So that is my statement, and I would, I would welcome the opportunity to formalize and bring it back for a full council approval as an official statement made by the town council, the town of Fairfax, if all are in agreement. Yes?
Suggestion, Mayor?
Yes, please.
Since the chief mentioned there may be a mental health issue, there may or may not be, I think rather than addressing this as a specific incident, because I think we heard very strongly that mental health issues need to be treated differently during some of these discussions we've had on racial equity, et cetera. I would rather that we bring it back as just a strong statement against antisemitism and hates, you know, that sort of hate speech or, so my preference would be that we not directed at the incident, but rather as, you know, our position on antisemitism. Just a thought.
Okay, I hear, I hear your point. I'm not sure whether we would have agreement council-wide. So in order to deal with this properly, as this is not an agendized item, this is part of a report, I would, I would send this and work with staff and bring it back for discussion and see if we incorporate your concerns and the rest of the council's desires in producing a statement like this, an official statement. Does that, does that resonate okay for everybody? I appreciate the time you put in developing it, and I'm fine with it as is. I think it was terrific. Thank you. Okay. All right, I think I know where to go from here, so thank you, everyone. And yes, we are a strong community. We have a lot of work to do. So moving right along. And number eight on the agenda is the, another item you've all been waiting for, and that is the reorganization of the town council.
Madam Mayor?
Oh, I didn't do public comment.
Yes, open time and items on the agenda.
Oh, my goodness, sorry. I even have my little one, two, three reorganized cheat sheet here, and I didn't do it. So we should start with any public comment on the report from the chief and my, and the statement that was read, and then we'll move on to open time. Sorry.
Oh, well, actually, Madam Mayor, I guess my clarification
No, 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 the reorganization is before open time.
No, no, it's, yes, it's after open time. I just wanted to point out, you're just gonna use open time for items on, not on the agenda, not have comments on the town managers or your statements. They could just make that as part of their comments, certain open time items, as opposed to having two separate comment periods.
Okay, so I understand. Okay, so, so we will move on to number eight?
No.
No, you're gonna move to, no, you're gonna move and move down to open time for public expression, which is comments and those items on the agenda, including any statement, if they like, on your statement or your statement.
Thank you. I'm so glad you're here, Garrett. Okay, so at this point, we're moving on to open time for public comment. This is for items that are not on the agenda this evening and comments that may relate to the statement that you just heard and the report that you just received. So go ahead, Michelle, and let's hear from the public.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, sorry about that.
And just a reminder, everybody has three minutes to speak and five minutes if you're representing a group. So the first speaker will be Tuna Fish Salin, followed by Jody Tims. And Mr. Salin, you are unmuted.
I will be quick. I just wanted to have put on the radar, I don't know what's up with the bus shelter or not, but I know we talked about having some removable sides at a plexi that maybe had some frames that could be taken in and out. And I don't know if it's gonna rain at all this year, maybe it'll never rain again. But if it does start raining, it would be nice to have sides on the bus shelter. And I just wanted to put that out there and bring that up, and hopefully it's on the calendar someplace. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Jody Tims, followed by Pam Miggs. Jody?
Good evening. In the spirit of gratitude, let me just thank you all very, very much for everything that you do. I can't believe your patience and your equanimity. So thank you, and also a big thank you to Chief Moran and also the staff for the incredible job all of you do. So now my comments, Jody Tims Cascade Drive and your representative for the Commission on Aging. A quick report, the Commission on Aging meeting this month is, is December 10th. It's a legislative update from Maguire and Levine. And in one, in particular, they're gonna be talking about a number of things, but California's master plan on aging. So that's the, from 10 to 11, and information on the website for the town underage friendly activities. Also, this, we have the Age Friendly Marin Forum. That's gonna be on December 16th. It's on cultivating and empowered life and looking back, looking forward to 2021. So all of us have had a pretty challenging year. If you're really wanting to spend a little time thinking about how you can thrive in the midst of all these challenges, we have a speaker, Barbara Waxman, who is a gerontologist, leadership coach, author, and speaker, and she'll be presenting on the 16th at 10:30. Again, the Zoom link on the website. Next thing I wanted to mention, this, this, a couple of weeks ago, or well, on the 20th of November, we also had a Bay Area age-friendly meeting, which we don't have those very often, but there were 17 of us on the call from eight different cities and counties across the Bay Area. So San Francisco, Marin, Oakland, Berkeley, Emeryville, Fremont, San Mateo, and Santa Clara. And we all shared for a couple of hours the different activities and approaches we're using to work with older adults dealing with issues around COVID, and also digital literacy and digital inclusion. So I just wanted to mention that. That's a really important collaborative effort that we have going Bay Area-wide. For Age Friendly Fairfax, I want to thank Barbara Kohler for updating our scorecard. Speaking of that work ethic, she's always at that. So thank you very much, because that will be the basis for our five-year report that we're working on. Also wanted to mention in part, based on public comment last month, that Age Friendly Fairfax, myself and Wendy and, and members of the task force have been in touch with Nancy Holland and Alejandra, who are the resident service coordinators at Bennett House and at Victory Village. And some good things are happening both of those places. I'll not go, ooh, is that six seconds? Oh, my gosh. Okay, well, that's it.
Jody, if you have any, a few other things, please go ahead. You are a, you are a group, many groups.
Okay, okay, well, just quickly, the only other thing I think I'll mention is that one of our strategic goals as Age Friendly Fairfax is to support disaster preparedness for older adults. And I facilitated yesterday a meeting of all the NRGs of Marin, the neighborhood response groups. So that is also a great group. There were 12 of us who are all looking at and sharing how we're doing neighborhood organizing throughout Marin. Amy Flynn was there and reported on her activities for Fairfax. And, you know, of course, we're all looking forward, well, some of us here, for the Ross Valley Disaster Coordinator to eventually help us coordinate the NRGs, the VOAD, the Firewise Community, the CERTS, community leaders, Marin Village, all those groups and the liaisons with chiefs of fire and police and staff, town managers, et cetera. So a lot of really good work happening in Fairfax, across the county and across the Bay Area that I'm really delighted to be a part of and represent Fairfax. So thank you very much.
Thank you, as always, Jody. Next, next speaker, please.
Next is Pamela Miggs, followed by Richard Applebaum. Pam, you're unmuted.
Okay. Hey, everybody.
Hi, Pam.
Hey, so I'm gonna just give you a little bit of information about the Ross Valley Sanitary District as I'm on that board. So we just created a recent scholarship program. The district is 110 years old, and this is the first scholarship program. So we awarded three recipients, $4,000 each. We also have just passed a resolution approving expanded eligibility for the Sewer Service Charge Assistant Program to nonprofit, low-income, affordable housing developments. So this is in addition that we also have a discount, 25% discount for eligible low-income property owners of single homes. So we're feeling really good about this. There's not a lot of agencies that are offering that. Also, we have about 100 people right now who are in the program. Please, if you're out there, call the district, go online, and look to see if you qualify, because I think it's underutilized. And we definitely are able to help if you meet certain criteria. Last, our Larkspur Landing property is Last, our Larkspur Landing property is just recently been cleaned up for the PCBs. And we're just going to, we're waiting to be signed off by the EPA. And so that will be coming to the community. And you will be hearing probably some open public forums on what would you like to do with the nine acres of the RVSD property, which is down near the ferry. And then last, just I'm changing gears here, and I want to give a shout out to volunteers in general, to all volunteers in Fairfax. There's many people who have done hundreds, probably thousands of hours. And I'm just so grateful to all the volunteers and also to the coronavirus volunteers who have been buying groceries for weeks. And so, or months. And it's just a beautiful expression of how the community cares about each other. So thank you and thank you, Renee, for being mayor. We've had some great discussions and I really appreciate your leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. And I wanted to say thanks for the report. It's really interesting to have a report from you and we haven't had one before. So I would invite you to make, to keep us apprised of all of the work of the sanitary district and thank you for your service. Next speaker, please.
Next is Richard Applebaum, followed by Walt Vernon. Richard.
Good evening, Council. I had originally wanted to talk about the incident with the swastika, but it's been covered really well and I really appreciate Mayor Goddard's thing that you wrote and Councilmember Hellman bringing it up and the report from the chief. I have one thought that I'd like to put out to the council, the staff and really the whole town. And, you know, since the the sort of action that that person took was to sort of, sort of put a symbolic language that, you know, was hateful in our town, maybe we could come together with some kind of creative thing that, I don't know if it's a campaign or a slogan or a drawing or a logo or something that says that, you know, Fairfax is a place that is welcoming and, you know, something that we almost do go the opposite direction where we may, you know, we put something out there that's a positive that says, all are welcome here, this is a safe place and we celebrate diversity and peace and something like that. So just throwing that out there. I wanted to just thank outgoing Councilmember Reed for his service. I wanted to congratulate incoming Councilmember Cuttrono. I wanted to say to the mayor that while we don't always agree on some policies and approaches and issues, I really, really appreciated an extremely palpable effort that you've made all year long in setting a much more generous and easeful and loving tone. You've been very patient with a lot of things that have come up. You've allowed people a lot of space to speak and and you've tried to be really, really flexible and I wanted to acknowledge you on that. On a entirely different issue. And it's interesting that that John spoke about this a little bit on his final comments. There's a lot of confusion and there's been a lot of, as you all know, acrimony, attention and perhaps misinformation about what's really afoot in Fairfax regarding development. And while I know you all can't speak about specific projects that are either in play or likely to emerge, I think that the town would really appreciate maybe a small statement posted on the website from all five council members that just says something generally about where you are about development. You're more for affordable, you're okay with this or that, because it's really confusing. And when things come up, the planning commission and the council and involving code changes, ordinances and various things, it's just been really unclear. And I think there's something that doesn't involve violating Brown Act and 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 can still give us some sense of where you are, because there's a lot of confusion. I think the six Walsh thing brought that to light once again. So I really appreciate a paragraph or two from everybody put on the website that can talk in a broad sense about where you all are on development. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Richard. And for the kind word. Next speaker, please.
And next is Walt Vernon, followed by Veronica Garretts. Walt, you're unmuted.
Great, thank you. And I'll also, and this is a time, I'm just going to thank everybody for everything because you all rock. I just, representing the Climate Action Committee, wanted to make just a couple of quick announcements. You may have seen around signs for MCE Deep Green. We've actually entered a competition with the town of San Anselmo to see who can get to 20% of households signed up for MCE Deep Green first. So please help us beat San Anselmo and and help us beat climate change, right? So if you, if you're not on MCE Deep Green and you want to figure out how to do it, it's easy, it's cheap, call me, email me, whatever, let's get it done. Second thing, we have been hosting a series of open conversations with members of the community to talk about our upcoming revision to the Climate Action Plan. Every second Monday of the month, we've had an open Zoom call for anybody who wants to. And we've had fairly good attendance. We're going to talk again on December the 14th at 6:30. And we'll post that on our website and on the town website and all that. So please join us if you can, because it will take all of us, right, to really deal meaningfully with this issue. The last thing that I wanted to talk about is our annual retreat. Every year, the Climate Action Committee gets together to build its plan for the coming year. This year, we've decided to actually break our retreat into two meetings. And so we'll be meeting on December the 19th and January the 16th. And of course, these will be noticed and open to the public to try to really look deeply at the Climate Action Plan and kind of our goal is to help the town get to climate neutral by 2030. What are we going to need to be in this coming year to help us move in that direction? So we welcome anybody and everybody. It is going to take every one of us. And so please come. Thank you.
Thank you, Walt, for all the hard work. And I hope people attend. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Veronica, followed by Joe McGary. I've unmuted you, Veronica.
Thanks, Michelle. Thanks, Walt, for suggesting. It's so exciting that there's this healthy competition happening between the towns of San Anselmo and Fairfax around MCE Deep Green. And I just want to put in an additional recommendation. So easy, I just signed up last week and it took me 10 minutes online. So highly encourage everybody to do that. Thanks for your work on it, Walt. And Renee, also want to thank you for the statement that you crafted in response to the swastika incident last week. So graceful, as always, and really covered. I really also want to highlight and I appreciate that you mentioned the way in which he slandered BLM and and really lifted up the African American rights that were threatened within that too. So thank you for being so wise. And in the vein of kind of that campaign that Richard mentioned and in the spirit of the humanity that John Reed highlighted of inviting us just to touch the humanness of each of us, I wanted to suggest a campaign that the town of Fairfax could take on, whether it's through the Res J Committee or the volunteer board or if the council feels like it could be taken on by somebody else in a different committee or just the council members themselves, around connecting community members, inviting community members during the holidays, inspired by Renee, a conversation that we got to have with some folks after the MEWOC event on Saturday. The sense of really reminding each other of the light and the humanity that we all hold, whether it's a hashtag Fairfax Forward or something that we could invite as a town in the town newsletter and invite community members to reach out to somebody across the divide, whether it's a generational divide, a racial divide, an ideological or religious divide, and give them the opportunity to or invite them to spend an hour together, whether it's through Zoom or a social distanced tea on the ball field where they can listen for a half hour to each other and then tag a photo of themselves if they're into social media or send it to the town and then really collect this image and a reminder that we we are greater than our differences and that we respect each other and that we can listen to each other with compassion and understanding. So just throwing that spaghetti against the wall to see if it feels like it could be useful and thankful for the inspiration. Yeah. Thank you for listening.
Thanks, Veronica. Next speaker, please.
Next is Joe McGary, followed by Deborah Benson. Joe, you're unmuted.
Thanks so much. Yeah, thank you, Renee, for your for your leadership in the last year. And chance, it's it's great to see you up there. I just like to comment that during the Board of Supervisors meeting, November 15th, where they approved the Sheriff Department's new Drug Crime Squad, Sheriff Doyle made some cryptic comments that there are other towns and cities in Marin interested in a JPA with this specialized investigative unit, which is nothing more than an extension of the archaic war on drugs. We asked the town of Fairfax, take a stand and preemptively send a letter to the sheriff's department stating they have no interest and never will have interest in this JPA. Fairfax has Fairfax has made a commitment to racial equity and social justice. And everyone knows the war on drugs is in direct conflict with that work. Drug enforcement disproportionately affects Black and Latinx people. Of all people in federal prison for drug offenses, 80% are Black and Latinx. In state prisons, it is 60%. This is true, even though there is no increased prevalence of drug use amongst these communities. Minor drug possession is a known mechanism used by law enforcement agencies to criminalize immigrant populations, is the fourth most common cause for deportation in the United States. The Marin County Sheriff's Department is a known cooperator with ICE and its formation of the SIU will no doubt be another tool used by the sheriff by as the sheriff continues to ignore the sanctuary county designation of Marin. Marin County has filed multiple lawsuits against pharmaceutical distributors and manufacturers seeking large settlements, their role in creating the opiate epidemic specifically in Marin. For government agencies and therefore law enforcement to receive this money from these entities who intentionally flooded communities with drugs and then use it to have law enforcement go undercover to arrest and jail the people victims who sell, buy and use those very same drugs is nothing short of appalling. All over the country, states are moving to models of decriminalization of narcotics. Resources are being logically and compassionately transferred away from the policing and prosecuting of drug use and addiction, which has done nothing over the course of the 40 year war on drugs to make communities or people safer or healthier. Budgetary models are instead being shifted towards addressing attending to the root causes and treatment of drug use and addiction. In Marin, the county mobile crisis team is expanding its services and looking for municipal police departments to partner with. And that is the type of county task force Fairfax needs to be aligned with as we keep moving forward towards racial equity and distance ourselves from Sheriff Doyle and his archaic drug law enforcement team, which creates further inequity and causes harm to Black and Brown people. Fairfax was a member of the original Special Crimes Task Force and Sheriff Doyle will no doubt be back passing his hat, looking for our participation. And I ask that the town take a stance and make a strong statement that we have moved beyond this horrible and harmful war on drugs and have no interest in his SIU. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Next speaker, please.
Next is Deborah Benson, followed by Mallory Geithheim. Deborah.
Deborah Benson. Cascade Drive Fairfax. I'm also a member of the Tree Committee. At the last council meeting, just after a new Tree Committee member was appointed, Councilmember Hellman brought up a personal experience she had with the Tree Committee and made disparaging remarks about the volunteer committee. I have never heard a sitting council member criticize a town volunteer committee in such a way. I'm going to bring up a little bit of the backstory. It's in the public record. In late August, I was contacted by two members of the public about a redwood tree at 26 Redwood Road that had been cut without a permit. As usual, in such a manner, I contacted Mark Lockaby for details. He responded saying the citation had been issued with a $1,000 fine or making application to the Tree Committee for a postmortem permit. Next, I received an email from Councilmember Hellman using her town email address, signed Stephanie Hellman, Councilmember, Town of Fairfax, saying, Deborah, I have pictures from my neighbor of your good friend, I'm going to say bleep, on two separate occasions trespassing on my property, snooping, snapping photos as a result of privacy breach. I would have thought you could have picked up the phone and asked me about this concern about the redwood. I believe you should step down Tree Committee for demonstrated lack of integrity. My husband and I are discussing opening a case and pressing charges against bleep. Attached is our report, which will accompany the Tree Committee forum. I responded to that email, bleep responded to that email. And Councilmember Hellman, again, from her town email, wrote back, sadly, the redwoods we've topped were topped before we bought the house. We have an official tree reporting providing this. There is an overzealous and bipolar neighbor who blows the whistle on everyone. We have only trimmed, cleaned the redwoods, never cut until recently, which was an absolute mistake we own. If you read the PDF I sent and had anyone bother to call me, but and and bleep, you have not told me twice about anything because I have blocked your number from my phone. Please stay away from me, both of you. It's so disappointing. I find this to be absolutely inappropriate behavior from an elected public servant, asking for preferential treatment after she broke the law and then attacking the committee who is just following ordinance, which has no provision allowing for a postmortem permit or a chat with the perpetrator. So I, I, I think maybe the Tree Committee deserves a public apology. And perhaps incoming council members could be given a primer on on appropriate behavior and conflicts of interest. And thank you for hearing me.
Okay. Thank you, Deborah. Moving on to the next speaker.
Next is Mallory, followed by Jane Richardson. Mallory, you're unmuted.
I got it. Hi. I just want to thank, as much as I don't agree with most of you most of the time, I want to thank you for your hard work because I know it's really hard work. And it's nothing I would want to do, but I really appreciate that you're doing it. I had just two little, two, two issues. One is in terms of Marin Clean Energy, I signed up, I don't know how many years ago, but you guys were at the Christmas fair. And I think the first one, I did the first tier. And then after that, I did the complete Marin Clean Energy. Now, since we don't have a fair this year, maybe you guys in your newsletters could keep selling that Marin Clean Energy to people as a, you know, either a one time deal or for or for Christmas or just as a regular thing, because I think it's really important to upgrade to that. And it's not that much more expensive. And I think it's really important for the world, at least our world. The other thing is I am on the affordable housing committee. Now, we, we spend a lot of time on unaffordable housing on this, in this, you know, in this town and and supporting people who want to build bigger houses than most of us want to have built, many of us. But the reason that I'm bringing this up is because we, we've met since I think Peter was in charge twice in, I don't know, four years or five years. We only had one meeting after Peter. So I would like this to be a regular committee that actually does something and helps people in Fairfax who, you know, need someplace to live, to either find places or, you know, find places we can, we can turn into affordable housing or at least send people to places where they can have housing in Marin. Because we're not doing it. And it's very frustrating to be on a committee that doesn't meet. You know, or, you know, and. You know, or, you know, and being of which, it'd be nice to have the design review board again. Just saying. All right, anyway, thank you, stay safe while you guys, and, uh, thanks for your work.
Okay, thank you, Mallory. That was a lot. Um, appreciate your service. We will meet again.
Next speaker.
Yes.
It's Jane Richardson. You're unmuted.
Okay, thank you. Um, it's Jane Richardson, MAC, Fairfax resident forty years. Um, although I am a tree committee member, I'm speaking only for myself tonight. On, uh, the Feb- the November eighteenth town council meeting, Councilwoman Hellman made the scurrilous statement that the tree committee was loose. Unfortunately, she chose a time and a place to attack the tree committee when we could not defend ourselves or respond in any way whatsoever. So that's why we're doing it now, that's why I'm speaking now. We would have said then, and I say it now, um, I question the timing of her accusation. Perhaps her thoughts were influenced by the fact that the tree committee had just recently made the decision to deny the Hellman's request to excuse them from paying a thousand dollar fine for cutting down a redwood tree without a permit. The timing of her disparaging the work of the tree committee certainly appears questionable, dare I say suspicious. For Stephanie Hellman to say that the tree committee is loose, considering some of her behavior, is a bit mind boggling. Public servants are expected to perform to a higher set of standards. They receive nor should they expect any special favors from any volunteer committee. As a member of the ResJ committee, Stephanie Hellman's moral character should be exemplary. The tree committee members are all fine, upstanding citizens who volunteer their precious weekends and time to tromp around the hills and dales of Fairfax in an effort to protect the trees, the citizens and the beauty of Fairfax. For, for to disparage the work that we do is really, I don't get it, I don't understand. I really would like to know where she got the idea that we are quote, loose. We are not, we pay strict attention to our ordinance, we do everything we can to, to make sure that things go well. We've never really had a real problem with anybody ever before. In fact, people thank us. I think Ms. Hellman would do better to offer a public letter of apology. But I'd like to thank Garrett Toy for standing up for us. It was very much appreciated because nobody else did. Thank you.
Okay, Jane, thank you. I, I, I would like to just, uh, take, take this opportunity, um, I, I object to this, uh, calling out of a particular council member, um, in a public setting where, uh, many people on this call don't even have any idea what's being talked about. Um, I want to say in her defense that the word loose, um, I believe, and I won't go on and on, but, uh, came from a system which was not very well understood, having had gone, having had, had gone through some changes, um, when we were appointing members of different boards and commissions and, um, and changes were made to, um, our procedures. Um, loose, in my, um, observation of the statement that she made at the last meeting was referring to our processes and not to the individual work of those who serve us on the tree committee. That's my observation and, um, from here out, I really would appreciate that we don't call out one council member. There are other ways to handle, um, our disagreements. Um, but, um, again, thank you all for your service. Uh, next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Valerie Hood. You're unmuted.
Okay, so I would just like to say, um, I thought Renee, that when we had public open time, it's not a time for council to speak or disparage people who are calling in. So, I mean, I find what you just said rather disparaging. As the people on the tree committee said, uh, they should have been able to have a, a public voice when they were being disparaged publicly. And, um, I understand you standing up for a fellow council member, I do understand that. But you, you're really not giving credence to people who have put in a lot of time. And I understand why they're angry. You know, I might, I, I have a few issues myself, for instance, with the, you know, you and Stephanie over your behavior on the street and what happened to our chief of police, for instance. I have some problems with what went on with Cascade Canyon. There are, you know, it's not about disparaging you in particular, but it does, you, you do need to be called out sometimes, it's just how it is. Um, not everybody's going to agree with what you have to say or what you do. And a lot of us don't agree with much of anything you say or do. And this is the only time we really get to talk about that. It doesn't feel like a very representative government to very many of us out here at this point. And if you start to feel some anger coming from people, it has to do partly with how you treat us. You need to understand that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, next speaker, please.
I do not see any more speakers, Madam Mayor.
Okay, um, so, uh,
Actually, I'm, excuse me, sorry, Mayor, uh, two more hands just popped up as I said that.
Okay, let's hear them, please.
Um, that is Mark Bell, followed by Steve. So, Mark, I have unmuted you.
Okay, here we go. So, uh, a few days ago, we were down on Cascade and, um, almost got to witness a head-on collision. So, I mean, sir, you know, sarcastically, you wonder if someone's put up cameras there hoping to catch something for a snuff movie. Somebody's going to get killed. It's already been shown, uh, by the chief of police that it was safer, in his opinion, with all of his years that you've just allotted, that the conditions were safer on Cascade before you started having these people muck it up out. We were also told about Cascade that it was totally funded by, uh, grants from, uh, I believe it was, uh, Safe Streets or whatever. But that wasn't really the case. We're paying, it's like an open pit, we're paying, we're paying Parisi, we paid Parisi, we continue to pay Parisi, and then we pay this other guy who drives several hours to look at it and then drives home. And what is it, we're paying like five or six hundred dollars for his time on the road. There's nobody in San Francisco who's qualified who can get here in forty-five minutes or so, especially with the way traffic is. So, uh, so people had brought up it was going to cost two thousand dollars to re-stripe the road. Well, what's it costing us as it continues to go on? Where's an update on the situation? This was supposed to have been resolved like nine months ago or eight months ago. It's still continuing. I mean, and that was the first time that I've been on Cascade in months and I almost witnessed a head-on collision. How many times does that happen a day? Maybe you people really should go and do some due diligence and stand there and watch people. Watch how people drive, how they're trying to maneuver there. It's totally absurd. I'd also like to get the final figures on the parcade. I mean, that was a grant, the grant was sat on for seven years. Uh, I'm pretty sure that the grant doesn't increase by its lost buying power in the seven years. But what's the final total? What did it end up costing the town? Is it like another open pit? What was the final price on the bus shelter? I believe it was supposed to be seventy-five thousand. Is that the case? What's to do with the pavilion? I saw it on the agenda, I had other things to do, I couldn't chime in on the consent calendar. Another forty thousand for, uh, for con- continuing or further study on seismic retrofit. Isn't that, how much should we pay for the original guy for that? I mean, to me, I'm looking at like an open pit for tax dollars. And, uh, five, four, three, two, one.
Okay, well timed, Mark. Thank you very much. Um, do we have any other speakers?
Um, Steve.
Okay.
Speaker named Steve. And I've unmuted you, Steve.
Thank you. Um, Steve, Cascade Drive. Our neighbors and I have again been misled by the town council and town staff with the changes that were done, um, ironically on John Reed Day, re-striping Cascade Drive and making a bad situation worse. During the October town council meeting, it was stated that the Fairfax Police Department and Ross Valley Fire Department were never consulted on the original changes. Concerns were expressed by Chief Marin. Think, his concerns included the fact that Ross Valley Fire was never involved. Chief Marin, Morin, sorry for mashing his name again, um, noted that one of the firemen questioned him on the changes that were done to the road and said that they were reckless. Don't quote me on that, but he's, they, they were, they were bad changes. Chief Marin also noted that parking along the shoulders within the fog lines had become an issue with complaints. The fog lines have enticed parking further out into the road, along with trash cans that are stored throughout the week, exasperating the narrowed road con- conditions. These were the concerns that were brought up in the meeting, not trying to salvage the fog lines that the prior council members put in, in, on, on a win right before election day last year and blindsided the community without any, um, neighborhood input. Councilman Hellman and Reed were the town council liaisons with the community. Overwhelmingly, the online town survey indicated the neighbors felt the new conditions were unsafe. Now it is worse. No common sense was used in these changes, none whatsoever. The council and town staff now own these unsafe conditions. As someone that's involved in the construction industry, once you, once you put your fingers on something and make changes, you own the whole thing. It is, the, the road, the changes, the unsafe conditions now all fall on the town and town staff. How any potential reasonable professional could say that their judgment was that they could skirt Caltrans rules and put the striping the way it is now, as the town manager told me in an email today, is, is a joke. Every square inch of that road is needed for safety, for pedestrians, bicycles and cars. And now you put this stripe in the center and along with the fog lines, severely restricts everybody along shoulders that include retaining walls leaning out into the road, trash cans and parked cars. It is dangerous. I'd like the town council members to drive Cascade Drive tomorrow.
Would, would you please finish up, uh, your time is,
But I'd like you all to, to see what you have done to, to our, our beautiful country road that I have enjoyed for over twenty-five years, which you have thoroughly wrecked with signs and over striping. It's a disaster. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, I, are there other public comments or?
Um, there is one more public comment, Amy Flynn. You're unmuted.
Hi, um, it's Amy Flynn. I, I wanted to call up, I live on Forest Avenue and we just wanted, um, we're a firewise group and, um, our group really wanted to thank the town for your amazing work on the town-owned lots on our street and getting rid of, um, the brush and the workers have been amazing. And, um, we are just really thankful, we, you know, we've all been working hard on our lots and we had mentioned to, um, a few of the, uh, town council members, Hellman and, um, Kohler, I think, um, in particular, really helped us through. So, we, as a street, really just wanted to thank you so much and it's, if anybody who walks their dog on Forest Avenue, come down and see all of the clearing, they've done an amazing job and we're really thankful. So, thank you. Love all you guys.
Thank you very much, Amy. Um, are there any other speakers or are we ready to move along?
I do not see any other speakers, Mayor.
Okay. Um, so, now's the time. For item number eight, on the regular agenda, we're still in the first part of the meeting regular agenda, is, um, the reorganization of the town council, um, and the selection of mayor and vice mayor. So, um, I would love to ask Michelle to give us a staff report, please.
I would be happy to, thank you. So, each year in December after the election, uh, the council decides to, they, sorry, I wasn't prepared. Um, the council rotates the positions of mayor and vice mayor, which, uh, go for twelve months, December to December. And, um, the idea is to give every council member a chance to be vice mayor and mayor while they are in office. Um, in the past, the council has, uh, selected and I guess, actually here, I just want to say, in the staff report, I wrote as a matter of practice, and I know there was some, um, misinterpretation of that, and when I said as a matter of practice in the staff report, I meant just what the council has done in the past fairly consistently. And it wasn't that it was a policy or regulation or a law, it's just how you guys have done it and, um, but it's completely up to you how you want to make the selection for mayor or vice mayor. Um, so, in the past, uh, the current vice mayor has generally been selected as the next mayor and a council member has been selected based on whether or not they've had a turn at vice mayor or, um, whether, if all the council members have already served as vice mayor and mayor, then the, the choice would be, uh, the one who has, the longest time has elapsed since they were mayor. It will be their turn again. When there's a new council member, um, you decided, it looks like, um, back in twenty-seventeen, you sort of formalized it and we started including it in the staff report that it made sense, I won't say formalized it, but you reached a consensus that it made sense when there are new council members to, um, consider them after they've served for a year rather than, you know, a day or an hour for the position of vice mayor. But you can do whatever you like. So, um, I hope that clarifies the confusion out there. Did you have any questions?
Yeah, if, let's go ahead and if there's any questions of Michelle or potentially clarifying, uh, comments before we go out to the public, that would be great. Barbara?
Yeah, I'd like to make a couple of clarifications, um, about the reorganization prior to the public comment and Mayor Goddard and I briefly discussed this today. And one thing I want to point out is the staff report is written in the standard format that's been used since twenty-seventeen. There is absolutely no intention by staff to direct the reorganization in any way. It is just, in quote, the facts and provides the general approach that may or may not be utilized in the reorganization and the selection of mayor and vice mayor. And in fact, in the past, we, we didn't necessarily follow this practice at all times. And I want to also clarify that I have not had any interest in being selected as vice mayor for twenty-twenty-one. I served as vice mayor in twenty-eighteen and mayor in twenty-nineteen, which is relatively recent. And I want to state again, I do not have any interest in serving as vice mayor in twenty-twenty-one and in fact, had not even thought of this as a possibility over the last month or even in prior months. So, thank you, Mayor, for allowing me to provide these clarifications.
Okay. Um, any other council members, any questions for Michelle, um, any other, you know, clarifications before we go out and, uh, and hear the public?
No questions.
Okay. Uh, seeing none, I'd like to open this up, uh, for public comment.
Um, there is one hand raised, that is Brad Clark. I've unmuted you. I've unmuted you.
Thank you. This is Brad Clark, 22 Claus Circle. I just wanted to go on the record as supporting the vice mayor position to go to Stephanie Hellman. I think it's in the spirit of the process. And it would make no sense for Barbara Kohler to be the vice mayor once again. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next commenter, please.
The next commenter is Richard Applebaum, followed by Jess L. Richard?
Thank you. So as I'm understanding things now, it's not actually code or law. This has just been a custom. And I think it's a healthy one for our town to have the rotating thing. And as I've sort of done the math, now that the new council members that just were elected have four-year terms, it strikes me that if we continue our custom with Councilmember Ackerman moving to mayor and Councilmember Hellman moving to vice mayor, that will poise Councilmember Catrano and it will all continue to unfold. And I would imagine that Councilmember Kohler would be back in the mayor slot by 2024. So if this is the intention of the council and this is sort of just a no-brainer, great, I support that. If there's some new thinking or some other ideas, then I think the public would like to have some further comment on that. I don't want to start anything up if there's nothing to start, but I'd have some other things to say if it's going another direction. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Richard. Next commenter, please.
Next is Jess L., followed by Christoph Bessler. Jess, you're unmuted.
Hi there. I am glad I stayed on because I was about to sign off and I had just sent, Michelle, I had just sent you my comments to be read. So I'm glad I just stayed on and I'll quickly share with you all my comments that I sent in. So I just want to say, I want to echo what Richard just said. I fully support Stephanie as of next vice mayor. And there was some question online in these online discussions I saw about how the process plays out. Michelle just explained it more in detail. And it just seems to me that it is not only Stephanie's turn to be vice mayor and that she's just more than qualified and prepared to do so. She works really, really hard on behalf of the town. And it just makes sense to appoint her and give her an opportunity to her and newer council members who have diverse perspectives and can offer new leadership. And as of, I think, this week, she'll be on the council for a year. So I hope therefore it's obvious that she would be the next vice mayor and that that would make sense. I just want to mention a few other things I didn't get to say in the open comments when I sent my comment in. And I want to say thanks to John Reed for all his service and kindness. Welcome to Chance. And thank you to Mayor Goddard for all your work in this incredibly difficult year. You're all so appreciated. And just last, on a different topic, some of you may have known Gail Hoffman. She passed away recently and this agenda does honor her at the end. So I just wanted to say something about that. I didn't know her well, but I was friendly with her. And I just want to say she seemed to be an incredibly kind, gentle, caring person, who was very thoughtful and a great listener. And I hope that we can take a brief moment of silence in our lives to honor her memory and whatever you might remember about her. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jess. I'm glad you stayed on. Next speaker, please.
Next is Christoph Bessler, followed by Sandy Hancher. Christoph, I've unmuted you.
Hello, everybody, Christoph Bessler. So first of all, like everybody else said, hats off to all of you guys. I would never, ever want what you're doing to do myself. I don't know how you're doing it, any one of you. But when I was hearing the discussion and I wasn't 100% clear about it myself, what the rule is or if the rule is binding or not, I just thought, what I love about Fairfax is that you give everybody a chance to be in the vice mayor and the mayor role. So I would just suggest, whatever you do, make sure everybody has a chance. And that means either for Barbara or for Stephanie to give them a chance to be in each one of these roles. It seems to me like Stephanie has the shorter term, if I understood that right. So it seems like she should be the one who goes in that position. But again, like, it's good what you're doing. I love what you're doing and I have the highest respect for you. And if you follow that, that basic general rule and that spirit, decide it in that spirit, you know. I do also not always agree with everything you do. So I have differences, but I think you're doing an excellent job. So I'm not going to steal more time and you'll decide just fine, I know that. Thank you.
The next speaker is Sandy Hancher, followed by Mallory. Sandy, you're unmuted.
Thank you. I'm going to, much of what I have to say has already been said. And thank you for clarifying the background on the changes. And I just want to support Stephanie Hellman as the next vice mayor and also to thank Barbara Kohler for how good she was as president very recently and for the generosity of saying that you were not thinking of being the next vice mayor. I think it would just be fair for Stephanie, who's worked very hard and is a very good council member, to be the next one to be the vice mayor. And I'm glad to hear that the two days is not a hard and fast rule. And it just makes sense for Stephanie to be the next one. I wanted to add something that I hadn't said in open time about the anti-Semitic swastika incident. And that is that Renee, I think that your statement was excellent, just excellent, perfect in every way, very articulate and represents me as a Jew. It made me feel so much better. But I wanted to say something about the way that the criminal justice system works. The local PD decides to, whether or not to continue an offense onto the district attorney. The district attorney is the one who decides whether charges will be made and what those charges will be. She always, she also decides what the dispensation will be, what the punishment will be, and if it will be restorative justice or if mental health issues will be taken into account. It's the job of the Fairfax Town Council to make a statement about what will not happen in this town. And I think it's appropriate to use Renee's statement as it was written. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you so much, Sandy. Any other speakers?
Yes, we have Mallory, followed by Sarah. So, Mallory?
Yeah, hi. I just want to agree with every speaker so far about Stephanie and Bruce being mayor and Stephanie being vice mayor. And I also want to acknowledge, Michelle, you're not on the, I don't know if you're officially on the town council, but I just want to thank you for your work because you were great. That's it. Okay.
Okay, thanks, Mallory.
I'm the town clerk.
Would you be seen on the town council?
And next is tuna fish Salem.
Hi, guys. God, I wish I could read my own handwriting. It's a problem. You should see the inside of my head. You know, there was a whole discussion about all of this online. And I kind of want to comment on that and just kind of say, you know, be careful online. Everybody kind of like jumps on things and makes assumptions. And it's kind of like a game of telephone after a while. Somebody heard from somebody else and, you know, it's just problematic and people end up fighting with each other and calling names and all kinds of stuff. And it's a problem. I don't know how to get past it, but how do we just not react would be a good place to go. As for mayor, whoever's mayor, I mean, for, you know, first off, you guys in the council, you're all nuts. And thank you, I couldn't do it. I'm in a better position on this side of the podium. But whoever's mayor is basically the face of the town. And I've seen a lot of mayors and a lot of meetings, not just in this town, but all over, be it like, you know, the Senate, Supreme Court, whatever, the country or other countries. And some people are a lot, some people have a lot friendlier interface, whether intentional or not. I know I can seem kind of grumpy myself and be kind of short without intending to. But I just urge whoever's mayor to try and not get too impatient because it's easy to cut people off and want to speed the meeting along. And it turns off the public and really turns off like the dialogue and the community involvement. And, I mean, it ties in also with, you know, people jump, having bits of information and being upset about stuff and not really knowing quite what's going on. In a worst-case scenario, it's Rosanna, Rosanna, Dana. And we don't want to waste each other's time, but at the same time, how do we educate each other and bring each other along without being grumpy and crabby and turning people off? And it's, I don't know how to do it. I'm pretty grumpy and crabby and turn people off myself, but at times, don't make them laugh. But, you know, you get my point. It's like, as mayor, don't turn people off, don't be crabby. You know, apologize if you do, but how to be welcoming and listen to us, the public, hour after hour after hour, saying the same things over and over again that you've already heard 300 times. And, you know, there might be a tidbit you get someplace in there. But how do we welcome and involve the whole community and empower people? And that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Sarah. Do we have any other public comment?
Yes, we have one more. Call-in user, number one. You are unmuted. You may have to press star six to unmute.
Hello, Frank Agar again, 13 minutes away. Fairfax folks were reacting to the staff report on this item. The mayor's position is not elected in Fairfax, but appointed and rotated every year to try and give every council member a chance to be vice mayor and mayor. Perhaps it's time to run an initiative in Fairfax to make the mayor's position elected. The mayor's position now is mostly ceremonial in Fairfax. The mayor has the final say on setting the agendas, runs the meetings, and carries the title. Current Vice Mayor Bruce Ackerman should be the next mayor. And I must say that Renee Goddard has run a very fair meetings, very fair meetings for the past year, giving everyone who has called in or zoomed in a fair chance to make comments. And I think that's been very beneficial for the town. Barbara Kohler was just re-elected. Chance Catrano was the top vote getter. Stephanie has a short three-year term. And in all fairness, Stephanie Hellman should be the next vice mayor and then mayor the following year. And Chance Catrano, vice mayor the following, after that. Then when Chance is mayor, Barbara should be vice mayor. I mean, we used to have a joke at Fairfax that every third person at the corner of Belinas and Broadway that you ran into was a former mayor of Fairfax. So I think it's important that everyone be able to share in the glory and the grief serving as vice mayor and mayor. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Frank. Okay.
No more comments.
All right. Yeah, so at this point, we will bring it back to council. And if there are comments, then please make them. And if not, I would entertain a motion for appointment of mayor and vice mayor.
Mayor in terms of process?
Yes.
Typically, what you do is you take a motion first for the mayor.
Okay.
Whoever's mayor sits as mayor and then takes the motion for vice mayor. That's how I've done it in the past.
Oh, okay. I thought we could just get it done one tick. But we'll do it that way. So unless there are any other comments, wait just one second.
Chance have the comment.
I was just going to make a motion.
Oh. Okay, why don't you go ahead?
I was just going to make a motion to select Bruce Ackerman as the next mayor of the town of Fairfax.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion Catrano and a second Kohler. Councilmember Hellman? You're muted.
Aye.
Councilmember Catrano?
Aye.
Councilmember Kohler?
Aye.
Council, Vice Mayor Ackerman, you get to vote for yourself?
Aye.
And I absolutely vote aye. And so this, this motion carries. And Vice Mayor Ackerman will now be Mayor Ackerman.
All right.
And congratulations.
Congratulations.
And I just, this is my moment to thank you, Renee. I know we've spent a lot of time thanking, thanking folks this evening. But you took on this position of mayor, having no idea what this year was going to look like. And none of us did, but what a year. And you have just really stepped up and done just an absolutely amazing job for this town, holding it together for businesses, for people, for the ongoing town, for how we can survive this and how we can keep smiling and keep our humanity through it. And I thank you so much for that.
Thanks, Richard. Thank you. Have Garrett?
Sorry, I think as tradition, normally if we're in the women's club, we would point out that your name as mayor for 2020 is put on the plaque in the women's club. And then you'll also receive one of these things.
Oh, yeah.
Renee Goddard, mayor. And so we're still working on all these things. Obviously, for the plaque in the women's club, they actually just got your name wrong. So we actually have to have it redone. Actually, you know what's really funny? They put Barbara Kohler 2020.
Well, there you go. All right, well, thank you for the thought. Much appreciated. All right, so then we will move to the second.
I think Bruce has taken over. Bruce has taken over.
Oh, hey.
Really, I really second the comments of what some of the folks in the public said that this game of telephone, really, let's watch out for this. This was one of those classic cases where there was absolutely no conspiracy. So just to show that there's no conspiracy, unless there's any discussion, I'd be happy to entertain a motion for an appointment.
I want to do it. Can I do it?
Go forward, Barbara. I haven't gotten to make a motion in a year.
You can do one later. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Councilmember Hellman to be vice mayor, starting tonight. You have to wait, Renee.
But you get to vote. So I will, I'll do the roll call. Renee?
Yes.
Okay. And Councilmember Kohler?
Aye.
Councilmember Catrano?
Aye.
Councilmember Hellman?
Aye, thank you.
And I will vote aye. Congratulations. And I believe the next item on the agenda will be a break.
Yes.
10:10 PM. Yep. What are you going to do?
We have to review the agenda. And now I'll be quiet.
After 10:00, so I guess the next thing we do is review the agenda. So what we have here is sort of a double meeting because some of the parts of the meeting made sense to do before this switch and some afterwards. So we now have another consent calendar with four items on it. And then we have a regular agenda with two items on it because one of them, item 15, was continued. So we have two discussions.
Mayor, I'd like to make a suggestion. I don't know if the rest of the council will agree to this, but it seems to me like we can get through the consent calendar. And I think we have to do the civil ground jury report on climate change to meet the deadlines. But I kind of think that item 13 may require... But I kind of think that item 13 may require more discussion. So I don't know what's on our December 16th agenda, other than starting the conversation on renaming Sir Francis Drake possibly. But it seems to me like in order to be able to really give that the kind of discussion it needs, we might want to move item 13 to the December 16th. I kind of think the rest of this stuff we could get through. My two cents.
Yeah, that makes sense. May I suggest a slight change to that, which is to just move item 13 after item 14 so that we can then reevaluate after we do what's, after we do everything but item 13, how late it is. In case it's amazingly quick that we get there, then maybe we could complete that, but.
Fine, friendly amendment to me. So if if you want me to make a motion to move item 13 after item 14 and we reevaluate after we get through the rest.
I'm sorry, are we saying that we're we're gonna, we're gonna, we are gonna get, go through nine through 12, though?
We're gonna go through nine through 12 and number 14 because there's deadlines on civil grand jury reports.
Right, 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 right. Yeah.
So does that make sense? And then see where we are about potentially looking at item 13 if for some reason we get through all this very quickly.
I, the one consideration I would like to throw in is that if there were people waiting for that discussion, it is a long and important discussion. I would rather pull it now and I would rather continue it so that we can start fresh and that people who want to come and be involved in the conversation will come. Otherwise, we're looking at not before 11:00 PM, no matter what we do.
Really good point. And that allow people who are just waiting for that to move on and maybe go to bed.
Garrett, do you concur that there's not a heavy agenda envisioned for the next meeting?
I'm looking at the agenda right now. I think it's fine if you wanted to move the item 13 to the 16th. You have a couple of things, but you started earlier at 6:30 and you don't have announcements or open time, so you'll save an hour right there.
Yeah. Okay, that sounds good to me. And it's, I'll just point out that it's much more difficult on Zoom to be able to get a show of hands of how many of the public are waiting for that item, but it's likely that there are some waiting for that item. So.
Okay, so why don't I revise my motion that we're we're going to move forward with item nine through 12 and item 14?
Yeah, second.
Okay. I guess I need to take a roll call vote. Councilmember Cuttrono?
Aye.
Councilmember Kohler?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed, we've all got new names, I mean Renee Goddard. And Vice Mayor Hellman? All right, and I vote aye. Okay, now we can move on. But we'll take a break first. So it's now 10:15. How about we take a break until 10:20? Is that long enough? Yeah, okay, 10:20.
No, he said eight minutes. The fingers, eight minutes. 10:23.
I missed that. Okay, 10:23. Universal coordinated time. See you then. Calling the meeting back to order. So do we get a staff report on the, I guess we don't get a staff report on the consent calendar, huh? So any council questions on the consent calendar or items that anybody wishes to pull?
I have something I'd like to make a comment on. Perhaps a change to, but it doesn't need to be pulled. Should I wait till after public comment, Mayor?
How do we do that?
Well, I mean, I could do it now. It's just brief.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead and do that because then it'll inform the public comment.
Okay, so on item nine, one of my questions which I asked previously was since it talks about the roof, I was wondering, since FEMA are paying for part of the roof, what we would use these per capita grant funds for? And Garrett reported that we can use it for some of the match for the roof, which is going to be quite expensive or other things. But as far as the reds, so that's just, just, I was confused. And so that got clarified. But the second piece is that in the resolution, it talks about all these various categories of people other than the town manager that could sign off on various documents. And I think rather than having that specificity, it would be better just to say town manager or designate. And because there may be some aspects that, for example, the finance manager doesn't know, and another person would know. So we would leave that up to the town manager to decide who that designate is. So that's just to change the resolution to just remove that level of specificity.
Are you talking about section 11 of the resolution, the delegates?
Muted myself, I apologize. Yeah, section 11. Rather than saying town, town manager or his or her designate and not have any of those such as. And I think Garrett had told me beforehand that that would be fine. So those are just a couple minor comments, straightening out my confusion, which may have confused somebody else.
Okay, if that makes sense to Garrett, then makes sense to me. Any other comments or discussion on that? We, we, normally we would just have questions at this point, then go to the public comment and then go back to any discussion. But Renee?
Yeah, no, it's a question. Or I'm actually just looking at the, at item 12. And we're receiving the update on the town's residential rental assistance program. Is there not a decision to be made in terms of how we proceed? It's not in the staff report, but my recollection is that we did need to move forward with the decision as to what we do with the remaining funds or if we
Actually, in this staff report where he's saying wait at this point.
Okay, so that's just, we're taking that as the, okay, I thought it was a decision to be made. So I'll take it as a report. Okay.
And maybe one thing I could add is I had it in my council member report is I sit on a committee with, that gives out HUD funds and they receive CARES money. And so in my council member report, it talked about a new countywide residential assistance program that will just complement our work. And the supervisors are poised to approve this December 8th, and that should happen pretty quickly thereafter. But what that would go, and there was an error in my report, it's for extremely low income residents and would pay 25% of their rent for six months. And that's because of the governor's executive order, which prevents evictions if you pay 25% of your rent. So that's just a new program that's coming. And as part of that, in my council member report, there's also a micro business, small business portion of that that the details of that will be worked out with another community benefit organization called Meta. And that will come a little later because they're working out some of the details. So there will be some sort of grant program for micro business and small business up to 25. So stay tuned for that. And if I get more outreach materials, I'll share it with town staff so we can put it on the newsletter and get a link to it. Okay? Sorry to interrupt, but you just reminded me that I needed to mention that.
So on, still on the rental assistance program, can you, Garrett, do you mind reminding me if this is for the grantees, do they just get one month? Or are they, do they have to reapply if they want a second month? And how does that work?
Right now, your program's limited to one month's assistance.
Are they eligible for another month if they've already been granted?
No, not under the current program as approved by the council. They, they did, the nonprofits did indicate, obviously, people need more than one month's assistance, but the staff report says, let's just go through the remaining, let's see what happens. They have eight more in the pipeline. Let's wait. And then after that, you could reevaluate the program and decide, you know, if you want to provide additional assistance to some families in need or do something different. You know, the nonprofits have shared with me some of the family situations and clearly they could use the assistance, but I think you should just wait and then reevaluate the program. You know, like in January, or if I can get enough information updates, maybe we could put it on for the 16th again.
Okay, so we ready to go to public comment? Okay, let's go ahead and do that. Clark, if you would see whether there are any hands raised?
I do not see any hands raised at this moment, but maybe we give them another few because of the latency with the video.
Account for the latency rate.
But it doesn't look like anyone has raised their hand to comment on these three items.
Okay, we'll bring it back to council then. Any further discussion on any of these items or a motion?
Okay.
Chance?
Yeah. I guess I just had one more question for Garrett. In his conversation with St. Vinnie's and Ritter, whether or not there was a sense of how many of the grantees were still in need, my thought being that perhaps, you know, instead of waiting to reevaluate, knowing that we've, you know, spent almost 25K on 16 grants that were awarded, and there are only eight in the pipeline, and we still have, you know, 35K to spend, that that money would be better spent sooner to help keep these people in their homes rather than, you know, waiting a couple of months to then check in again. But I don't know if that level of specificity was given to you, Garrett.
I think generally, if I had to guess without bringing up the spreadsheet to remind me, I'd say off the top of my head, probably three or four households.
Why don't we see if we can try to get information before the 16th so we can look at it? And by then the county program should be launched. And I reminded them of our program. And, you know, maybe there's a way we can complement, you know, if they pick up 25%, we may be able to pick up 75% if there's a bunch of people in Fairfax again. So if that, I know it, it's hard. Those guys are so busy, especially this time of the year, but if that follows on kind of what Chance was kind of bringing up is maybe we could jump on it sooner if we need to.
Okay.
I'll ask them, and if I have updated information, this will be on your December 16th agenda.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, so I would like to make a motion, if I may, to move consent.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, we'll go with a, with a roll call vote. Councilmember Kohler?
Aye.
Councilmember Cuttrono?
Aye.
Councilmember Goddard?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hellman?
Aye.
And myself, I vote aye. So that was the consent calendar. And now we have the item, what, what was item 14, the response to the second civil grand jury report, because we just voted on one, but this one is on the climate change. How will Marin adapt? Garrett?
Yes. You, you may have noticed you, we sent out a supplemental staff report related to this item. So we actually have two staff reports related to our responses to the grand jury report on climate change. What we wanted to point out is the staff responses that were prepared for council consideration, that was actually based on the responses prepared by the town's climate action committee, as well as draft responses that were prepared by the county of Marin. We did look at some of the other cities' responses, but in general, that's what we based our responses on. So maybe a little background on the grand jury responses. The grand jury, they had findings they wanted us to respond to, six findings. And typically what they want is they just want to know if you agree or if you partially or wholly disagree. If you disagree or partially disagree, then they really want an explanation. If you agree, you could just say you agree. In some cases, what we did is we said we agree and then added some additional responses. In this case, a lot from the CAC. Similarly, recommendations, really, the grand jury is looking for if you're going to implement the recommendations. And if you're not, then when will it be implemented? Or if you're not going to implement it, then let me step back. They want to know if you're going to implement the recommendations or if you already have. So if you already have, you could just say you already implemented. They want to know, will you be implementing? And if you are, they need a timeframe. And then if you aren't going to implement, then they like to know the rationale for, I, that would be the case. So in this case, what we did in our responses, we actually agreed to, we agreed with all the findings, one through five. And we partially, sorry, disagreed with finding them F7. And for the recommendations, we indicated they were all implemented. But in general, what we did was we provided responses to most of the findings and the recommendations. I think the only thing that I could tell from the climate action committee that perhaps where we might have disagreed slightly was down, I believe it's on, let's see, climate action committee, I think it was F1, finding F1. It had to do with, I believe the climate action committee talked about in some measure, they agree. We actually changed that to we agree and provided the main point, which we thought the climate action committee was making is that while adaptation measures are important for addressing climate change, mitigation efforts and measures are just as important, if not more important. And I think that was the point the climate action committee was trying to make in a lot of its comments related to adaptation. So I don't think they were saying adaptation efforts aren't important. They're saying mitigation measures should also be important. That's what we did primarily for our added into comments regarding the implementation. We, we said all the recommendations were implemented and then provided just additional information on qualifiers. So with that, pretty much how this would work for the council, if you want to make changes, it's fine. What we would say is if it's easy for staff to figure out what revisions you would like, then we can incorporate it, then you can approve the responses with those revisions or directions to staff to include revisions if you gave us enough guidance. However, if it gets a little complicated, then I would suggest we would come back to you officially in December 16th with the responses as revived and resized, and you would approve it at that time. That probably would be slightly after the 90-day window, but it'd be so close, that wouldn't be an issue for the grand jury. Normally, we just let them know timing wise, response is coming. They're usually fine with that. So those, that's what I see as your options. If you like the responses as is, if you like to add to them, if you like to tweak them, then we could see what we can change, what we understand is getting changed, you could prove it with those changes. Or again, we could come back to you in December 16th. So that's the staff report.
Okay. And I guess for the public, it, it should probably be included in this initial description of the item that this grand jury report a lot of folks in the county are saying this is a pretty significant grand jury report because it's talking about, for one thing, a pretty heavy issue. It's talking about adaptation to the kind of disasters that we're seeing, which are very major and very important that we figure out how to adapt to. That includes things like sea level rise and wildfires and flooding. And, and it talks about, the, the grand jury report was specifically talking about focusing on adaptation, but it's also talking, and our responses are also talking about mitigation. but it's also talking, and our responses are also talking about mitigation, which is how to stop contributing to the greenhouse gases that are causing these things. And it's also, this is an important report because this is expensive stuff. This is probably the most expensive stuff that our county will do over the next decades. This is going to be absolutely huge and sort of a slow moving response and a slow moving train in a way, but it's moving faster and it is definitely huge. So that's pretty universally acknowledged. So while we're looking at this late at night and we're writing this sort of formal response and most of the things we're saying we agree to, it's actually really major stuff. So just a note for the public of, of what we're talking about here. So, um, any questions, uh, for the staff, for, for staff on this before we go to the public?
Well, I have, I have a question of process here. So I did a comparative review. You probably did too, or other council members probably did too. So what, what do we feel like the process is going to be this evening to hone in on a final set of language? Do we not know until we hear from the public? Is that what we're?
Well, I have a suggestion. Let's listen to the public. I have a couple of changes to the language. But if we don't feel ready, just like Garrett said, we could still take it up again on December 16th. But there may be members of the public that have some suggestions.
Yeah.
A couple of language things I would like to add. And then maybe others do. And if it just seems like it's too much, we wait till the
Yeah. Yeah, I, I don't know that it's going to be too onerous, but okay.
Yeah, I, I would, uh, just make the suggestion that we, um, one thing we might hear is just it needs to be more forceful, the response or, or whatever. Um, that's one level of tweaking, which may or may not need to be done. Because as Garrett says, there's sort of a formality to these grand jury responses. This isn't, the grand jury response that we're writing tonight is not our policy statement. This is what we're going to do next. That would require a lot more effort, but with the grand jury response, it's much more of a, we agree with the grand jury's recommendations kind of a thing. But the other level of what we might be considering tonight might be more, uh, more substantive with regard to, I think in particular, the distinction between mitigation efforts and adaptation efforts. Because the grand jury report suggests things like taking agencies that are currently focused solely on mitigation and giving them a task of working on adaptation as well or whatever. And so these sorts of things are, they're actually kind of policy issues. And we, as one of the jurisdictions responding to this report, are weighing in on the, uh, desirability of that policy direction. So there's sort of a couple of different levels of what we might be thinking about tonight. But we'll hear from the public. That'll be the, the first thing we do. If there are any other, any other questions or brief comments before we go to the public?
I guess. Just real quick, um, so everything that the climate action committee came up with and recommended is now we have in that supplement.
That's it. And, and just to give you the process, that was, so Walt did a first draft of that, brought it to the full climate action committee at our regular meeting. The committee had a pretty robust discussion about it. And then based on that discussion, which kind of, we had pretty much consensus what we wanted to do with it. A three-person subcommittee was formed, which, and that subcommittee had basically one day to get the draft to, to Garrett. And so we just incorporated the committee's writings into that. That's what you see before you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, shall we go to the public? Um, let's go ahead and open that up. And Michelle, if you would.
Okay. I would be happy to. I see one hand raised at this point, and that is Wendy. I've unmuted you, Wendy.
Thank you. Um, Wendy Callens, President Sustainable Marin, speaking on behalf of, uh, Marin Climate Action Network. We have been extremely involved in this process, um, of looking at climate change and how it needs to be addressed with the county. We're a, a collaboration of a number of organizations, including, um, all of the sustainables and organizations such as, um, Marin Conservation League, um, Cooley Earth and, um, some business interests as well. And so we, um, have been thoroughly reviewing the grand jury report. We're, we're very excited about the fact that this is finally getting some attention. Um, and interestingly enough, the county is going to be looking at the grand jury report, the drawdown strategic plan and the climate action plans from, um, all at the same time at its meeting next Tuesday. So your recommendations could be very timely. Um, we'd like to recommend that you take the language from, uh, the, your climate action committee, which has the stronger language. Some of it has been incorporated in the staff report, but we think that the climate action committee has a bit stronger language. Some, some specifics on that, um, where are the, um, where the grand jury is recommending that there be a collaborative effort? Uh, one of the things that's going on is that there are many different committees in the county. There are resilience committees, there is mitigation committees, there is, um, all of these things are operating separately and there needs to be some coordination between these. And so while it is true that there is a lot of collaborative efforts that are already going on, in many ways, there's so many of them that there has to be someone who is actually looking at all the different efforts and connecting the dots between all of them. Um, another thing that is, um, uh, the climate action committee comments on that while you do have a climate action committee, you do not have paid staff as the city of Nevada and city of San Rafael has. Obviously, a small town such as Fairfax, it would be difficult for you to be able to, um, have a staff on your own. So one of the things that has been explored, I know in the past, is collaborating with the city of San Anselmo, perhaps some of the other Ross Valley cities to see if you could merge your efforts and hire a staff person who could serve more than one town. So that would be something that we would request that you would look at. And looks like my time is running out. I am representing a bunch of committees, but I think that's really the two points I wanted to
She can have five minutes, can't she?
I can, but those were my, those were my two most important points. So I think I can let it go. I, I had asked, uh, sustainable Fairfax was going to be commenting. I'm not sure if they made it all the way to the end of your meeting here. So, um, but, um, we have been collaborating with sustainable Fairfax, which is one of our partners.
Thank you, Wendy.
Uh, Mayor, I do not see any other comments.
Any more? Okay. Okay, um, I'll give it just a second here, uh, to make sure that we don't have any new comments due to the delay in our broadcast. But it, I guess it doesn't look like we do.
No, there aren't any.
Okay, we'll bring it back to council. And, uh, if, uh, well, Barbara, you go ahead. I have a question for staff, but you, you go ahead. Uh, you're muted.
Sorry, sorry. I don't know what I'm doing. Um, to F one, um, I would, I'm just going to give specific language. Um, I would have add, the town of Fairfax has by far the highest percentage of MCE deep green opt-ups of all the 36 MCE member jurisdictions, 8.6%. And just not, not to add this language, but I just want to point out that the next highest city is El Cerrito at 6.4%. And San Anselmo is closer to, uh, something like 4.8%. So we've already beat San Anselmo, just in case you want to know that. But, um, and the second thing I would add, and there's four, there's three findings, F two, F four, F five. And I would put it in one of those findings. I would add the language saying, through the enactment and participation in the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority, MWPA, Fairfax and most of the county, except Tavron and Belvedere, have made a tremendous investment in climate adaptation for prevention of wildfires. Approximately 20 million in revenue annually will be expended for 10 years to conduct the work of the new JPA. MWPA is the only nearly countywide wildfire adaptation approach in the state. So I would suggest adding that to one of those findings, responses. And perhaps in the other ones, just say C above or C F two, or whatever one we put it in. And the other comment I would make is, is, uh, sort of jumping onto something Wendy Callen said. I didn't have a lot of time to look at the supplement and the changes that were made in the, uh, response. But I did see something that said very strongly that Fairfax would hire a person to solely work on climate change. And I think what Wendy Callen said was well taken. Nevada and San Rafael are much bigger cities, which much, with much healthier, more robust staff. I think the idea that Wendy talked about is potentially, and maybe you just put in language, potentially working with other cities in the Ross Valley to share a person that could work on these activities might really be a better approach for us because we have so many needs. And so that would be in, I, I, I didn't have time to tweak that language, but I think Wendy's point was really great in that area. And I think that would also, part of our deal is working together. So it seems to me like that would be a really good mesh is to have some or all of the cities, the smaller cities in the Ross Valley to work together with one person. Those are my comments. Thank you.
So I wonder, should we just take this in sequence and just go through this one by one? And just collect comments from the group and just take it, take it from the top, starting with F one?
That's a possibility, or another approach would be just kind of philosophically what things fit in. Because like I have comments about what Barbara just said along that level about some of the things Barbara said, I think, fit perfectly in here, but one of them I don't think does, and I wanted to.
I, I just worry if we don't take it in an organized fashion like that staff, I don't, I'm, I'm worried about staff. You know, if we don't take it like F one, here are our comments, you know, F two, then staff might not know exactly where we, you know? And, and then we're going to be under the gun for the sixteenth from a deadline standpoint and so forth. Anyway, I think it would be more organized to do it that way, but.
I think that's a good point. Maybe you just get started on your comments that way. I mean, I gave mine in that sort of order. Maybe you could do that.
Who, you speaking to?
Stephanie, because she
Yeah, I'm happy to go next, but it might make sense for Bruce to comment in response to you. I don't know.
Well, usually the mayor goes last. That's kind of how it works.
We're just talking about process here. Yeah.
Okay, are you gonna, are you gonna remember what you, you?
I'll tell you in general, I have a, I have a rule of thumb, never try to wordsmith a document on a committee, but here we are. Um, I'll, I'll go last, but, but I, well, let me just make the one comment that I alluded to, which is sort of a, uh, it goes to what Garrett was speaking a bit about of sort of what you do in a grand jury response. Um, the, the, uh, suggestion that we put in Fairfax's deep green numbers, I just don't think fits with the grand jury response particularly because the grand jury is saying, you know, governments need to collaborate, we need to have multi-agency, uh, you know, larger, uh, uh, committees that fit the, that fill the full county rather than it being all broken up among jurisdictions. We need to give more attention to these efforts. And so I don't see that us saying, well, Fairfax has, has done a lot with deep green. While we definitely have, um, that doesn't really speak to the grand jury's concerns.
Well, I think if you look at the responses, F one is specifically saying climate change mitigation efforts. And you look at the response, it's talking about what the town did. So this isn't a holistic response to the whole thing. It's looking at F one. So we can agree to disagree, but that is talking about the town's efforts.
Okay, well, while, while we're listening to comments by other council members, and I'll stop now. Take a look at the response to F one in the, um, climate action committees.
Yeah, I, I think that, yeah, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Are you done, Bruce?
I'm done.
Okay. Uh, Barbara, I appreciate, um, your comments there, particularly because we're beating San Anselmo. I'm, I'm familiar with those numbers, but I don't know that they are, I, I would include them. I, I, I think I agree with Bruce on that. So, um, so starting with F one, um, there was a statement that the climate action committee, um, put in that I think is really important. Um, and again, to Bruce's point, we really want to, you know, convey a strong stance here. So, and that's throughout. And so if staff hears anything, that's really what we want to weave back in here. Um, so if you look sort of like two thirds through the first paragraph of F one on the CAC, um, version, it says, and the IPCC, that's the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change, recommends that we achieve a reduction that is twice as large in the next 10 years. I think that's really significant and noteworthy, and I'd like to put that back in. We have taken advantage of low hanging fruit. I don't know if we need that. We must significantly increase our efforts if we hope to achieve even a similar level of achievement in the future. Um, so I would like to get the IPCC statement in there. The other statement that I would like to get in there is, um, that, I mean, we have mitigation in there, that's great. And I think we're mostly aligned throughout the document on, um, mitigation, emphasizing mitigation and not adaptation. But, um, I would like to see in here, but Marin has and should continue to have a major influence as an example to other communities, which gives us the opportunity and the responsibility to act swiftly and aggressively. So I would like to get that statement in there.
Oh, so as clarification, that statement is already in there.
Okay, I'm sorry, I missed it.
Some of the statements are in there. It's just, it's just reformatted. I, I, a suggestion is I get it. That was helpful pointing out the one sentence. We could add that back in.
Okay.
I think for your discussions, one is, the key is the response. That's the first thing. So if it, the agree seems to be fine, then everything you're adding is you're just adding the clarification for the grand jury. But the key thing is the agree or partially disagree or wholly disagree. So from our level, just making sure that's okay of how we answered for the council.
Yeah.
Bring the other things in, but I just want
Fundamentally, of course, we need to be in agreement on the, on the response, agree or disagree, for sure. Um, so I guess, does anyone have any other comments on F one before we proceed to F two? Is that how you want to do it, Bruce? Or should I just keep going?
Um, that might be a good way to do it. And if so, I'll just say that maybe we don't agree that the responses agree in that, in that what F one says is that Marin governments have been notably effective. Now that's, it's hard to know exactly what to do with that statement. Yes, Marin governments have been very effective and have done a lot of great stuff. And compared to governments in a lot of other places have done a really lot of great stuff. But compared to what needs to be done in order to save ourselves from the planet being destroyed by our changing climate, we haven't done nearly enough. So do we agree? Do we disagree? I'd say we can get this through, but it's, that's the question.
It says in meeting their goals to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. It's not the world's goal. So remember, for example, it's just a fair It's not the world's goal. So remember, for example, it's just a Fairfax example.
Yeah, you're right.
We had 2016.
Yeah.
We had a 2020 target, which we met in 2016. I think it's actually true that Marin communities have met their 2020 targets early. So that this is their goals. And so I think you have to look at in the context of that, which I think is different than the world. If it, if it's said in meeting the world's greenhouse gas goals, then that's a different story. So I think it's kind of specific there. I'm sorry for interrupting, but I think we need to look at what the statement is.
So shall we follow the process that Stephanie was throwing out that maybe we just go through question by question? And if we should, are we good with F one? That sound like a good process?
Sure.
Okay. All right. So I'll take it that we're good with F one. Does anybody have comments on F two? And we can just look at both of the documents plus whatever.
The language that I suggested adding to F two, F four and F five.
Or one of the, one of those, right?
Well, I think if you add it to F two, under F four and F five, you see, you just say CF two, because they're all sort of mean the same thing. But that's my suggestion. I already read the language.
Garrett, did you get that? The language? You're muted. You're still muted.
It's not doing it. There, ah, over there.
Yeah, yeah.
Ah, didn't take. Okay. Uh, yes, I have the language that council member Kohler wanted to be inserted into either F two, or I forget, F two.
Four or five.
Four or five. And so I, 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 I got that. That's not a problem.
Okay. Anything else on those? Say any of those three?
Just on, on F two. So I, you know, I'm, I'm in full agreement with the, the spirit of this response. I think something that I'm hung up with is where we say, you know, we believe that mitigation in the bigger picture is significantly more important than adaptation. Just think in the context of a town and a county. You know, we can buy everybody an electric car, but we're still in a transition zone and we still have to adapt. And I think it's, you know, we're not operating in a vacuum. And so I, I just don't want to, um, you know, you know, create any assumptions that if we, if we do what we can to become carbon neutral as a town or carbon, you know, negative, that it's going, we won't have to put dollars into adaptation. I think we're, you know, we're going to have to adapt either way. So just trying not to put, put one above the other, sort of, I really liked that final sentence because I found in my climate adaptation work that the, the best adaptation strategies mitigate at the same time. So I really appreciate that final comment, but that second sentence is sits strangely with me, but um, also recognize no need to wordsmith too, too much.
Is the, the one, you're looking at the, at which version, the staff report version?
Yeah.
Second sentence in F two, which is the climate is changing and that's the sentence you mean?
Uh, the second sentence, yeah, we, we believe that mitigation in the bigger picture is significantly more important than adaptation.
Oh, okay. Yeah. Yeah. Is it appropriate for me to respond to that? As having worked on this or, or should we go around? I don't know how to, because I, I should speak last, but, but I have a response to that.
You just said is as important as adaptation. Would that work for you? Chance, because I think that mirrors the last sentence.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, I'll just say my, my comment, it's, it's, it is. I think you're absolutely right, Chance. It's, uh, it's really difficult to actually compare these two. You can't really compare them. They're not on the same level. They're almost orthogonal to each other. One of the big differences is that mitigation on the one hand is obviously more important in that it is, as it says in the third sentence, if nobody mitigates anything, then we're just, we're not going to be able to adapt. I mean, it's just going to get worse and worse to where it just overwhelms us. And so somebody better stop emitting greenhouse gases. That's obvious. On the other hand, we could mitigate, as I think I heard you saying, we in Fairfax or even in all of Marin County could mitigate until the cows come home. And the globe would still be in the, almost the same position as it is now. And we would have to adapt just as much. And so this is really, it's, it's like one of those classic moral dilemmas that ethicists talk about in graduate school, you know, what are you going to do about the situation? Where your own actions are not going to save you, and yet without your own actions and everybody else's actions together, you know, we're all going down. And we're, we're stuck with this thing. And right now we can't even figure out whether we elected a president or not. I don't know what, how we're going to get out of this. But yeah, that, that issue is kind of at the heart of what we on the climate action committee were trying to do about responding to this is this mitigation and adaptation thing. And I think it's even more subtle than we were able to get into and discussing on the climate action committee. Renee?
Yeah, just pardon me for bringing this down to the sort of more banal level.
Right.
But I am trying to understand the process. So I'm looking at the staff report and the response to F two is a very succinct paragraph. And I agree that I loved the last sentence. But the response from the CAC is quite long and more substantial. And I'm, I have not honestly had a chance to run these one by the other and incorporate and see what was and not, and what was not incorporated. So are we looking at, I, I'm not sure we can actually do this in its entirety right now in order to, um, you know, really put these two together and come out with something. At, at least I can. So I, um, I appreciate what the staff report said, and I appreciate what the CAC did, but I don't know how to incorporate those, incorporate those now.
So I, I can help. So I think what you're doing is working out fine. I guess I just need to know what you want to do with that second sentence. But for some of the responses, I think, to tell you, so when you're talking about, um, I think the example you used was an F two, how it was longer, I used actually the first part of the response, but the second part started talking about best course, the examples. It seemed to me, uh, for some of that was really needed for the grand jury. So I went for more succinct response. That, that's why I don't think the heart of the response is, is different. It's just a little shorter because the main point here was how do you want to treat mitigations versus adaptation? You know, I kept in the small acts of, whatever, small prevention is always worth a pound of care. I, I kept that in there, uh, the focus. So, so I think we're, we're just about, I think you're doing pretty good and going through this. I think for some of the core things on mitigation in the big picture, it'd just be helpful to say, do you want to keep that in or is as important or just how you want to do it if you really want to tweak it at that level?
Yeah. Can you change the second sentence to say, however, we also believe that mitigation is as important as adaptation. And then that puts them on an equal level, which I think is where Chance was going. You know, I have a confession too. By the time this came out, I didn't have time to review it. I mean, I looked very quickly at the climate, at the changes that I assumed were the climate action committee and I did not have time to do it. I was busy waiting for the, the other stuff. So, I mean, we can probably go through this because I know Stephanie's done a comparison and Bruce worked on this. So I think we could keep going, but you know, I usually read this stuff in pretty good detail and I certainly didn't have time.
Well, as, as a person who worked on it, I can say that I agree with what Garrett said, that the, the response to F two in the CAC version was, it was well edited to bring it down to the response in the staff report. And I don't think anything too significant was lost. But the question that the chance brings up about that response, having the comparing mitigation and adaptation and saying one is more important than the other. I, I think the third sentence really gets to it that if we don't do mitigation, but really it should say if somebody, if everybody doesn't do mitigation, then we're doomed. Because it, that kind of leaves out the question that as a county, what do we owe it to our citizens? Do we try to adapt and hope that China quits emitting? Or do we, do we try to act as an example, which it does mention in the previous, in the previous response, that this is one of the roles that we have here in Marin County that we can be an example, and we have been a powerful example. And so, you know, do the best we can. I mean, what that, it really doesn't address that. And we, we don't even have time to address it tonight, much less to figure out how to address it in the grand jury report. But it's a very complicated ethical question, what we do as public servants here. Chance?
Just two quick thoughts. One, just look, trying to synthesize the two from the one from the CAC and the one from the staff report. I'm in agreement with Garrett and you, Mayor Ackerman. And I also just wanted to say to council member Kohler's comment, I think that's great. I'd even be happy to say instead of in the bigger picture, maybe in the short term. It's, you know, significantly, or it's, it's important that we prioritize mitigation. Even a statement like that, you know, is it continues to keep that flow of, you know, recognizing that like mitigation is, is important now, so we don't have to spend more money on adaptation in the future. But just the whole, you know, the question of the bigger picture and the question of more important were the two little concerns I had. So I think, you know, if we use terms like in the short term and prioritize or fit those in there some way, it might make, make it make a little more sense.
Was back when the Stern report came out, which was a decade or so ago, they, they made it very clear that if we, if we collectively, if we all act quickly, it's a lot cheaper than if we wait a long time. Unfortunately, we waited a long time, but that's something that isn't morally ambiguous. That's just pure, simple economics. Get on this as soon as possible. So that's a good point. Yeah. Garrett, does that give you some clarity about? And, you know, feel free to insert a sentence or whatever to try to capture that point.
I, I think what council member Cotrona said is fine. I, I wrote that down. That edit.
Do we have any further comments on that or move on?
Move on.
Through this? Okay. So F three and F four, did we?
So I don't know, Mr. Mayor, if I can help, maybe if we're going to go through it, it'd probably be easier if I just went through it with you because I could tell you exactly what I did.
Sure. Yeah.
Yeah. So F three, there's no comment by the CAC. I just put agree. So there's no other response besides agree. That's, that's F three.
Have we been, uh, provided those assessments? I mean, I, I don't know if I agree or not. I don't know that I don't agree, but.
Well, having read the report, the grand jury report, I think what this refers to is that one of the areas that we are the strongest aren't in adaptation, according to the grand jury report, is sea level rise. Because we've done some studies on that. They're saying in terms of the next step on sea level rise and the next step on a lot of other things, we need to get ourselves more organized about where we get funding and do the work. But the first step of doing the analysis has, is in good shape on sea level rise. I think that's what F three is kind of referring to and
Do you know why we chose, I don't remember why we chose to say no comment on CAC?
I'm not sure either. I, I think that the, uh, I don't know. I, I don't remember. We really discussed that on the CAC as.
Those models have been around kind of a long time and so they've been discussed in the county and so I don't think CAC has focused, at least when I was on, I don't think we did, but you know, I think they, they are considered to be well done in giving us a path forward. But I don't, I don't know. Maybe Bruce was involved in some of that. But I think Peter was actually on that climate action committee for MCCMC where they talked more about that. So I, I, I don't think, I mean, I personally don't disagree with that statement. I think that's kind of a simple one.
I'm, I'm comfortable with, we agree on that statement for the reasons I stated. Yeah. But F four, Garrett?
So F four, CAC just said, we agree. What I did was I said, we agree, but in reading the county's response, I thought it'd be helpful just to say what the different county efforts were going out there. So that's in essence what the tax narrative is saying.
Would you maybe read the part that you added new because if, or what you think, if you wouldn't mind maybe summarizing briefly what you added new?
So the CAC just said, we agree. There was nothing, there was no additional.
No, no, I know that, but you said you added something from the county, right?
Oh yeah, the whole, this whole section.
Oh, so this is from the county. You didn't add anything new. I'm sorry.
The first two paragraphs are from the county and the last, last paragraph, I think was kind of a modification I made that just recognizes that the other communities are going to have responses on what they're doing toward the efforts.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question on this one, um, because I recognize it sounds like we're, we're sending, sending our, maybe some staff to a working group that's addressing the general plan, safety element, and the incorporation of some of these, you know, public health risks of, of climate change. Is that correct, Garrett?
The, let's see, there's a local hazard mitigation plan. We did that. The working group, yeah, I think this is something that, um, planning participates in.
Got it. Um, my, my thought too was, you know, we have, um, if it's appropriate, we do have, you know, uh, standing committees, uh, that address these various issues, whether it's, um, you know, age friendly or, uh, the open space committee, um, or our new RESJ. But I, I feel like that's sort of, um, an oper, there's an opportunity there to have the, the conversation of climate adaptation or climate change intersect with some of these other committees, in addition to just saying, you know, there's this, this one thing. I mean, there, there are a lot of citizens that can engage at the local level to address this concern that's being raised by the grand jury, but just a thought I had when reading it.
Do you think you would add a sentence or two there, Chance, saying at the local level in Fairfax, we have a number of committees that intersect with these issues and speak, speak to them through the various roles of those committees? Does that make sense? Or am I putting words in your mouth?
Yeah, that, that's essentially what I was thinking. Um, I don't know the, the final piece to say, you know, how, you know, I don't know if there's any intention for, to bring these issues to each of these committees in the near future. But just recognizing, you know, public health, ecosystem, social equity. We have an amazing talented cast of folks that are working on these things. So that, I think that would warrant inclusion in a response.
What I would suggest, if it's okay with the council, if you, whenever we get through this, if it's okay, just working with council member Cotrona, they add a sentence or two related to what he's saying in this paragraph.
Good idea.
Hey.
Yeah, I think it's a, it's an excellent point that to state it a slightly different way, there's, there's some, we've got a, a lot of energy in some of these conversations because of the, the pandemic, we've got some energy around public health. And because of the Black Lives Matter movement, we've got a lot of energy around social equity. And so tying them in with this is, it makes sense. And so tying them in with this is, it makes sense. It's kind of like adaptation and, and mitigation. If you can do the same thing with, do, do both of them with the same action, you know, you find the energy where it's there. Good point.
Okay.
So.
So on F five? Okay. So F five, the CAC agreed. And all I did was there's one sentence the CAC had, and I just wordsmithed it and just wrote the same, except just different words.
Right.
Well, I think that's where I believe they specifically said about hiring one staff person. And I'm not sure if the rest of the council agrees, but I do like the concept that Wendy Callens brought up about perhaps partnering with other Ross Valley small cities and towns to share a person devoted to climate change work.
It, and I think she's saying that would be under recommendation R six. I mean, we could put it under F five, but F five was just saying, if it's just agreeing, there's insufficient resources.
Okay, I'm sorry. Since I don't, I don't have the new version in front of me. I was guessing that's where it was. I apologize.
Yeah. So that, that's, that's no big deal. Anyway, F five is really the same as what the CAC said.
I think F five is covered.
Okay. This is.
I personally prefer the language and the, uh, I think, um, that the, the CAC provided.
Oh, okay. I, I mean, if you guys.
I just think it's stronger, honestly. This is just a little watered down, the F five in the staff report or the staff version.
Okay, that's fine. If that's what the council wants, I'll just put the CAC sentence.
I agree with that too. Yeah.
Okay. So finding F seven, here's where there's a little you di- different way of looking at things, but easily could be switched around. So F seven talks about cross jurisdictional collaboration coordination, but Marin lacks any overarching organizational governance. I would partially disagree with the discussion that we agree there's no single entity, but there's lots of different efforts going on within the county. But that if a countywide effort was made by some organization to facilitate this, we would, you know, we would participate and cooperate in such venture. So that's why I said partially disagree. However, that being said, you could say, agree, and change this to say, we agree, but it should be noted, there's all these efforts. And obviously if something comes up, we would participate. I mean, that was.
Well, I think the recommendation is to establish this body, right? Because there's probably not enough coordination.
Uh, that's in the recommendations, but the findings are just saying, the, the findings are saying that you'll need.
We're on F seven, right?
Right.
But I, I realize that, but I'm saying, I, I, I'm saying like, how can you agree with the recommendation if you're not, if you're not? I'm saying we, I think we need to say we, we agree that it's, I, I mean, the fact that all these other, all these organizations exist is not the question, right? No one's, that the question, that's not the question.
Well, it, I, I, I think our, my take was cross, there is cross jurisdictional cooperation, coordination now. There's no overarching thing, but it's not like we're not trying. But however the council wants to do it, if you want to say agree, and then I would just reword this section to match that. That's fine.
That's the right approach because the, the grand jury report, as well as, uh, Wendy speaking earlier, acknowledged that, you know, there are a bunch of good efforts, but when they're like, you know, eight different groups doing things on energy efficiency, but they're all siloed or they're, they're communicating, but there's not coordination around grant funding and use of funds to have the biggest impact. I think it's just, it's clear that, you know, there's no overarching structure. So we should, you know, despite the fact that there are many good attempts to collaborate. And I would even include maybe, isn't there, um, like the MCCMC, Climate Action Subcommittee or something like that? Isn't that another attempt to be interjurisdictional that might be?
Another organization, yeah, another attempt really to collaborate. There have been a lot of attempts. A lot of people are trying to figure out how we can work together. But unfortunately, maybe more, more organizations.
And if this is, I mean, honestly, this is a holistic look at everything. And if there is redundancy, there may be an opportunity for, you know, I don't know. So.
So. I, I mean, I think we, I, I don't think we can say we partially disagree.
Okay.
You guys agree.
And I do like the way the CAC fr- framed it. So I think it can be pretty simple.
Okay, I'm going to change it to agree. And I'll change it to agree. And really in the response, it's, I'm just going to say, we agree, there's no single entity, but there are other things going on. I'll add the MCCMC committee. And then the last statement would say the town, rather than however, I'd just say the town would participate, cooperate with any organization created.
I mean, I think we have to just, but probably the most important thing here is that there are collaborations going on. I mean, the MCCMC committee is a collaboration, but there's no coordination. So you, we can collaborate and talk all we want, but there's no one, you know, that's, uh, holding, holding the reins on how we bring all this together and make some effective action.
And actually doing the work, like actually getting funding. Like the MCCMC committee has no plans to get funding and do a project. It's not what they do. So, you know, yeah. But it's interesting that they, they talk about, uh, the, the notion, which by the way, we've brought forth from the CAC as well. But then COVID hit and we didn't get a chance to really talk about it, about, about our budget this year. But the, uh, the notion of trying to get a staff person shared between two or possibly three towns here in the Ross Valley, that would be a, a kind of collaboration. And that would still make sense, even though there might be an overarching group in the county. The towns still have their planning department and their staff and their public works that have to implement things. And so this would be a collaboration that would help the staff to be able to more efficiently respond to, to climate and adaptation issues. So that might be something to mention in this, in here, you know, that in addition to the large overarching thing that we'd like to kind of build, we also will, we could use some collaboration between towns in order to increase the town's capability to, to work on this without busting our budget.
Didn't we already talk about that, where Barbara was saying that we would share some kind of coordinator?
That'd be under R six.
Where would that be in the document?
If it's under R six, you can talk about something like, but again, I'm, I'm open if you want to add something to.
That's six.
To designate a mayor to come up with a sentence or two. I, I'm all for that. Okay, how about I take it as, uh?
Yeah, Chance worked on that with you since he's working with you. Actually not making a joke.
I know.
For staffs, um, I mean, first of all, Chance is really sharp. All of you are, but, but, you know, for staff sanity, if one person works with them versus five of us differently.
Different paragraph.
Can actually get it done.
Yeah.
And I, I'm.
I think that sounds great.
Very sharp guy and can take the bow and run with it. I feel.
If you're willing to do that, Chance, I think that sounds great.
Happy to.
Okay.
So you've got the recommendations.
Sure. Okay. So the recommendations, what's different here is the CAC talked about supporting the recommendations, but really you have to respond whether they're implemented or not, or will be or not be. So I created it in that context. And so R one's an odd one because it talks about the board of supervisors. We don't have any control over the board of supervisors. So Marin County reports they've implemented this, what their efforts are. But I just added a line that says, we'll participate in any more multi-jurisdictional tax force created by the county.
I see the logic to that.
Good.
Next up, then, R, R four talks about MSEP. I, I think this has already been implemented, uh, but I just added the line, I think that was, um, I think the CAC was, it says in green and party, and talk more about MSEP in general. But I said, it's already been implemented, but I said, we participate in it, but we supportive of any expanded opportunities for MSEP, including any additional funding, either, you know, staff resources, funding sources that can really support the expanded role in staff or MSEP. I mean, that's, in essence, what I wrote for R four.
Yeah, the thing that, in the, in the rather long response from the CAC, it's talking about two issues, one of which is, I think, relevant here, which is the, the, uh, the, the question of whether MSEP, whether we agree that MSEP should have an expanded role to think about adaptation, or whether on the other hand, it's better for MSEP to focus on mitigation because of the theme of trying to not give mitigation short shrift. And we have one organization that's a multi-jurisdictional organization of staff people to think about mitigation. So that sounds like a fairly powerful thing there, you know? But it, it, we are talking about giving them more funding, which would be good, but then expanding their role to where they're thinking about adaptation as well. So sort of diluting their focus on mitigation. So that's a question.
So that, that was a confusing thing for me for the CAC's response because the R four recommendation actually says, including both mitigation and adaptation in cities, towns, and other member agencies. So that threw me off where you said, let's focus more on mitigation or talk about mitigation. But the recommendation actually says both mitigation and adaptation.
Right, but right now they focus exclusively on mitigation as far as I understand. I mean, they mostly do a lot of data collection, but they also focus on mitigation. But they, they are not focusing on adaptation, whereas at least that's my understanding.
Well, they're not, but, but I sort of think that if you're looking for a good place, I mean, I like the response that was written, is if you're looking for a place for kind of a centralized, where the fingers go out. It's not that they would do everything on adaptation, but they might recommend specific areas for adaptation, compile where, you know, what Christina Rourke tends to do is a lot of compilation. But I think, I mean, I'm personally in agreement with the idea that it's not a bad idea to add that to the list. It's not that she or her, if there are staff, would have to do everything. But it would be good to have a centralized location, particularly with the idea that both mitigation and adaptation are important. So I don't, you know, I, I don't think we're writing the Bible here, unless maybe we are. But it seems to me like that is kind of a good idea.
Well, the grand jury report also talks about forming another whole organization for adaptation. And so it's not like if we didn't give MSEP that role, there wouldn't be an organization. They're, they're talking about another large organization for that. But I think we need to get through these things. So the main question is, do we need to make any additions to what's written in the staff report there on R four?
I mean, what I took from our working session at the Climate Action Committee, Bruce, is we really wanted to emphasize mitigation. And I see that here with the statement, make further progress on mitigation. Um, I don't know.
What about a sentence that we add, just to keep it brief, but a sentence that we could add that, that, uh, to the response in the staff report, that a concern could be that MSEP lose the focus on mitigation by having an expanded role in adaptation? Just to, not to try to solve the problem, but just to call out the problem that this is.
So you would add a sentence to something like, uh, we do have concerns that this would redirect resources for mitigation, which has been a primary focus of MSEP, by adding adaptation.
I love that. Chance?
Yeah, just one, um, I think one way to, uh, streamline that might be to, uh, that, that first sentence where we say, you know, supportive of expanded opportunities for MSEP to make, and instead of further progress, we say concurrent progress. Like, you know, we're okay if they're doing that thing where they're sort of doubling up and tackling adaptation, resiliency, and mitigation at the same time. But like, you know, we're leading with the mitigation. If they can tackle adaptation concurrently, you know, that, that's what seems to be what the CAC has been pushing, uh, through their recommendations is to really, you know, stay oriented towards mitigation in the short term. And so, but concurrent progress would be a win-win.
Works for me.
I just, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm confused because having not been privy to any of these conversations with the CAC, um, or your subcommittee, and hearing this, it feels contradictory. It sounds, it's very clear when you say, we must not allow MSEP to lose its focus. We must invest in adaptation. Let the adaptation committee do that work. And I'm thinking over here, we're saying we would be supportive of expanded opportunities for MSEP to make further progress on, and as well as adaptation ever. So I, I'm, I, I don't feel comfortable stepping in to try to determine the intention of the CAC, but that CAC statement is very clear to me. So I think we have to be clear what it is we're, we're wanting to respond to whether we believe that we should broaden the, the, uh, the mission of MSEP. I'm not, I'm, I'm not clear and I, wordsmithing it doesn't work when I don't know the overall intention of those of you who've been studying it and coming up with your, you know, recommendations and doing the hard work. So I defer to you and Stephanie on that quite honestly, because, um, those seem like very different answers and responses. I'm not trying to cause trouble, but I, I, I want to make sure I'm representing, we're representing the intention of what the CAC's working on.
Thanks, Renee.
You know, there are going to be 11 communities responding to this and people are writing pretty strong responses. And so if that's what we want to say, we can go ahead and say it. You know, it's, it's essentially like adding what the sentence that Barbara said, only it's basically making that our core response is, you know, this is a real concern we have. So I'd ask you all, is this, is this a concern that we have? Do we think that, that it might make more sense for MSEP to keep its focus on mitigation? And maybe have more funding and more resources, but keep its focus on mitigation? And if so, go ahead and say that. But I ask you all, I'm, I'm talking too much already because I'm involved in this from both ends.
I'm just reading what the staff report says in response to the grand jury's report. So it sounds to me like the CAC who's been working on this, it really believes that MSEP should focus on mitigation. But.
Barbara, do you have the, um, CAC in front of you?
No.
Do you want me to read it to you? Do you want me to review this statement?
That'd be great.
The response is, we agree in part, we agree that we need increased funding for MSEP. We agree that membership should expand to include especially membership from the town and climate action committees and sustainability commissions. We disagree with changing the focus to adaptation. The county is already focused on creating a multi-jurisdictional adaptation task force, as noted in recommendation one. We emphasize again, the fundamental need to accelerate our collective action on the issue of mitigation. We must not allow MSEP to lose its focus. We must invest in adaptation, yes, but let the adaptation committee do this work and keep MSEP focused on mitigation. And we must strengthen MSEP and all of our work before that window to do so closes. We do think there are mitigation strategies that also improve adaptation and we can emphasize such strategies with co-benefits.
So I think the concept is good. I think it's too long, but I like the idea of basically you guys are saying in climate action, no, keep them on mitigation and expand the role. I don't think we should get into the level of detail of who to include that participates with MSEP. But I do like the idea of pulling out a few of those sentences. And so why not just say in our response that we, we don't agree with the, we partially disagree instead of what we have there. Um, I mean, we have something about this recommendation has been implemented, but I think we should say something about we partially disagree, disagree. And then pull, have Garrett pull out some of the sentences that are really clear. Keep MSEP, and I'm deferring to you guys, you guys are the experts. Keep MSEP focused on mitigation efforts. And that there will be a countywide effort on adaptation. And while MSEP, this is my two cents, while MSEP should be aware of what those issues are, that should not be their focus. I mean, does that make sense, Stephanie? I just don't think we need every bit of that language.
I agree. I'm fine with omitting that, that sentence that says, uh, we agree that membership should expand to include, you know, membership from town and climate action committees. I don't, I don't know that that's necessary.
Right.
Do you all think that's necessary?
I don't think it is. I think you're getting into a level of detail that may or may not be necessary or workable, to be frank. But just this real strong statement about staying with mitigation, can we just pull those out?
Yeah, there's another, then the line in that says, we emphasize again, the fundamental need to accelerate our collective action on the issue of mitigation. We can probably pull that out because it's inferred in all of the other, you know.
Okay, that makes sense.
I mean, you could omit those two lines and then I think you'd be okay. Go ahead, Renee.
I, I really like the, we do think there are mitigation strategies that also improve adaptation and we can emphasize such strategies with co-benefits. Because I think that focusing on those mitigation strategies that, that do improve adaptation is a way to, you know, not sort of preclude MSEP from working on anything that really isn't even, you know, that we're saying that we don't want MSEP to work on anything related to adaptation. But choosing those mitigation efforts that also improve adaptation, I think would be a, a good thing to point out. We're not being quite so, no, 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 we're basically, you know, keep the focus, keep the focus.
Well, what I'm recommending is we use the CAC version, omitting the two sentences that I just called out.
Oh.
I think that's pretty good.
That's fine with me.
So my only tweak would be the odd thing of how they worded the recommendation has to do with implementation. So I would change it to the recommendation is partially been implemented. And then I wouldn't say agree in part, but I could start with, we agree that there's increased need for MSEP funding. Take out those two sentences and I'll just put the rest in.
That sounds great.
I think they followed that.
You did. You totally followed that.
I think that's a good solution for, for what we can do tonight. I'm also really glad that, that the group that Wendy was representing is spending a lot of time on this because it's a deep issue. I see a couple of different issues here. The reason those first sentences are there is because the cap has had has wanted to get a cap member on MSEP. And we've kind of gone back and forth about this, but the solution, the, the current situation seems to be no, MSEP is limited to staff people. And while that may seem frustrating, if you're not a staff person and you'd love to be at an MSEP meeting, there is a logic to it, I imagine, in that a, a staff group can be very efficient because they don't have to do brown act things, notice their meetings or whatever. They just get together and talk about business and get back to work and that's how things get done. And so there's, there's a validity to having a staff group. And so to say that MSEP is the implementation group and some other group is the adaptation group may not be quite the same thing as saying, well, MSEP is the staff group and this other group is the public group. And so, I mean, I don't even want to go any farther on that because we don't have time and we're not the right body to figure this out. But there's, there's more subtlety to these, to this, to this discussion, I think, than than what we have time to address. But I think the solution that Garrett proposed as far as what we write is, is fine for us and keeping
I think that sounds great.
Hold on, hold on, there, we didn't, we didn't, we missed R six.
Oh, I'm going to R six.
We're not, we're not there yet.
I thought you were like calling it a night.
Four and I, all right, R six, Garrett.
So R six has to do with, uh, they talk about, if you don't have a full-time coordinator, then you need to have a committee or commission. So the recommendation, we said it was already implemented because we already have an act, climate action committee. But based on the council discussion, I would add a line that says something along the lines of, the town would encourage collaboration or something, town would cooperate, collaborate with other Ross Valley communities to see if there's something there in terms of hiring a staff position for everybody. Not quite worded like that, but the concept would be like that. And I'm sure Chance could come up with something since he's
Yeah, I think this is the, this is the place to talk about a few of our towns sharing a coordinator.
Right, absolutely. Yeah, because I'm trying to read the intent here, which the CAC has written. Each city and town needs to develop both a committee and a full-time staff. So I would hope that you all would be representing the CAC in, in, in seeing that a shared coordinator would satisfy that. That
The CAC has talked about that. That's a lovely idea. Yeah, it's, it's been around. We just, the COVID hit and we didn't get to put it in the budget. We were talking about bringing that.
Right. I just want to make sure that we're, we're, we're representing the CAC in that they were basically saying we need both. A full-time staff and a committee.
That is a council, sorry, that is an individual council of each city, town, to make that determination if they're going to fund such a position. So that's why I was trying to avoid telling other people what they need to do. But I think the collaborating, coordinating, writing that opportunity and talking about it, I think that all makes sense. Ultimately, though, the council would have to approve such a budget authorization if we ever got to that point. And the managers have talked about something like that.
Good, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so I think we are done with R six with Chance working with staff on those few items to wordsmith the language. Thank you, Chance.
Thanks, Chance.
Thank you.
You'll dive in, it'll be sequential editing, a new, a new technique. Everyone takes a shot at it, one by one. Right.
I think where we're at, may I just ask, it's my understanding that with Chance working with staff on the language, plus the language we've gone over tonight. And we've changed our responses to potentially agree or disagree or partially disagree. That we're good to go with this, with the idea that Chance would work with staff on further, some further language changes, so we don't need to bring it back on 1216. Is that correct, Garrett? Is that your understanding?
Yes, if you made a motion and you said, we approve these responses, subject to the revisions we went through, authorizing council member Catriona to make those additional revisions as as directed as the council, then we'd be good to go.
Well, I would make that motion if we're ready for that. And I really want to say, I really appreciate Chance being willing to do that. I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but I think you're a good writer and it's a good opportunity to dive in.
Stephanie, I'll just ask you specifically because you and I are representatives to the CAC. Is this, are you comfortable with this?
Absolutely. Yeah. I'm, I'm really pleased with how this went, this collaborative working session. Thank you. And thank you, Chance. My, you have my full trust.
Thank you to the CAC members who worked on it. Thank you. This is only a tiny part of a really huge discussion, which as I say, graduate school ethicists would be puzzled by it. How do we get out of the mess that we're in? Okay. Are we?
Bruce, may I, may I, if I may, may I make the adjournment?
We probably need to do a roll call vote on that motion.
I think you need a second on the motion.
Yeah, we need a second.
All second.
Oh, how about Renee?
How about
We need a roll call vote.
Yeah, okay. So we have a motion and a second? I didn't hear all that.
So I did the motion and Renee did the second.
Okay, all right. So council member, we'll start with Chance, Catriona. Councilmember caller.
Aye.
Councilmember Goddard.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hellman.
Aye.
And myself, I vote aye. Okay, so you wanted to comment on the adjournment, Renee?
Yeah, I wanted to, um, I wanted to, um, remember Gail Kaufman. I know that it is actually quite interesting because Gail stepped up to serve on the Climate Action Committee and we appointed her to the Climate Action Committee. And I met her, she was involved with Sustainable Fairfax for a time. And we sat down and we were very excited about a car share program in town. And we met and we both, it, we just established a, a really wonderful kind of unspoken understanding that things could be different, that we actually could have less cars because we could share. And she really dedicated her life and was beloved by so many to thinking, thinking outside the box and standing strong for what she believed. And she just had a presence in this town that will always be remembered. I, I, I was sitting down at the Roastery today and a woman walked by and I could have sworn it was Gail. And I had to look several times. She just deeply, deeply touched many people and she'll be remembered and I will always remember her. So I wanted to just put that out there and sending love to all those who are missing her and thanking her for all the service and her presence in, in the town of Fairfax. And we also are adjourning in memory of Jack Stewart and a longtime Fairfax resident. I didn't have the honor of knowing him, but we send our very, our very best to his family and friends and and that's all.
Thank you, Renee. And let's, I would just suggest that in memory of Gail, let's really hold that thought. We could have less cars if we share. That's really an important one. Okay. Ready to adjourn?
Okay, congratulations, Mayor. Councilmember Catriona.
Thank you, everyone. Bye.
Good night.